Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Polk County Public Schools School Board Work Session for June 8th, 2021. And we're excited that you all have joined us today. And without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. John Hill, our Deputy Superintendent of Schools. Mr. Hill?
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. We want to start the day with a couple of notices. We are going to have a discipline hearing this afternoon.
Yes, sir.
And in addition to that, we will have an executive session. So I just wanted us to be aware, so we're mindful in terms of our time today for those two items. We're also today going to move item nine and begin with item nine today, which is the mask face covering update, so that we can begin that discussion and have you bring forth the discussion that we've noted for today. So we're also excited to have with us today Mr. Hyde, our future Superintendent of Polk County Public Schools. So if you'd like to begin that discussion, I believe.
Okay.
I'll make a recommendation.
You'd like me? I can bring it up. So we have had multiple discussions in work session regarding our mask face coverings for the children of Polk County Public Schools. And there's been a difference of opinion throughout the last few times that we have met. And so we felt it was pertinent to bring this forward to the board today for a discussion. And then we're hoping to this evening vote on whatever the recommendation is that is brought forward this morning. So I would like to start off by, let me find it in my notes here, kind of give you an idea what we're looking at. So the thought was, and we talked about it at the last meeting, as you might recall, we talked about either going ahead and voting on May the 11th to be able to lift the mask mandate the next day, or we said, were we going to wait until today's date, June 8th, in order to allow for graduations and to finish out the school year as we had started. And with several comments for the board members, we decided to go ahead and wait. And so today I'd like to open it up for discussion. And the thought was to lift the requirement that students in kindergarten and higher grades wear a face mask, which would be effective, let's say tomorrow morning, June 9th. And then the wearing of a face mask moving forward would be at the option of the student or the parent. So that is a thought, and I'd like to hear what the board members have to say. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In talking to our incoming superintendent, Mr. Hyde, I understand, I think it's his suggestion that we make face masks optional, and I'm in favor of that, by the way. But I was a little confused as to why we continue to have something related to face masks in our policy. So I ask Mr. Hyde if he would discuss that with us this afternoon, if you don't mind.
Oh, no, that's fine. Mr. Hyde, go ahead.
Madam President, members of the board, through Chair. So the school district to make masks optional assumes that some students and families will continue to choose to wear masks. We have an established code of conduct that addresses dress code policies and procedures, which is where this code and this requirement currently resides. Part of that is the ability to ensure appropriateness. And so the reason why the recommendation was made to amend the student code of conduct portion under dress code was to ensure that students who and families who opt to wear masks, wear masks that are appropriate in nature and do not conflict with established expectations. For example, no symbols for gangs or potential violence, no nude imagery, nothing related to narcotics or abuse. So we need the opportunity to apply the dress code to masks. And that's why the recommendation was made to allow it to continue to reside there for the duration that masks remain optional.
So can I have a?
Yes, go ahead, yeah.
So, thank you, Mr. Hyde. So if, to clarify, it will remain in the code of conduct in the dress, as a dress code, so that for those folks who choose to continue wearing masks, those masks will be appropriate in the school district?
That is, that is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you. And I also had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Hyde yesterday evening. And one of the things we talked about is with keeping it in the code of conduct, it's not extremely clear as to who can mandate it. It just says when required by the district, but doesn't say, is that a superintendent can require it, the school level principal can require it? How does that get enacted? So as we're looking at revamping that policy, I know your recommendation was to add a note that it's optional for 21, 22. I'd love to see us clarify a little bit as to, is it the superintendent can enact it, but the board has to ratify it within so many days, or what would be the process moving forward? Obviously, if there's a state requirement or a federal requirement, we have to follow state or federal law. But I just want to make sure that it's very clear to us and to the public that 100 years from now, we don't end up with a rogue superintendent or a rogue principal that just decides we're going to wear masks one day and they have that power. So I want to make sure that we clarify how that can get enacted.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. And I agree. I do think that when it addresses it, correct me if I'm wrong, in the student code of conduct, we have the ability to enact a lifting of the mandate, if you will, for the children. That's why it's specifically worded that way, because then it would be up to Superintendent Hyde to move forward with as far as the adults, teachers, staff, and so forth. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct. The student code of conduct is an extension by virtue from board policy. So the reference to district, which I understood from your concern, maybe too generic, it is, again, more explicitly stated in board policy as to how we arrive at the mandate for masks. But I'd be more than happy to work with Mr. Bridges to refine that further. And if need be, make a reference back to board policy within the student code of conduct rather than adding additional language there. I can work with Mr. Butler and the team and Mr. Hill and others to do that.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Ms. Fields?
So I think that we're all in agreement to what's going to be proposed today. But I want to make sure that we kind of go back to the last meeting. It's my understanding the reason why we didn't make a decision at the last meeting is because we wanted to hear from Mr. Hyde. That was my understanding. And what Mr. Hyde is recommending as an incoming superintendent, we already know for the most part what Mr. Hill and Superintendent Byrd would recommend. So I want to hear from Mr. Hyde, even though I think I know what Mr. Hyde is going to say. But I would like for him to say it himself, as it relates to the student dress code and the face covering. I see this as being like in a toolbox. We use it if we need it.
Correct.
And we might not ever need it again. But if we do need it, at least it's there. And maybe fine tuning it and doing whatever needs to be done to make it very clear as to where the authority rests. But I am definitely wanting to see something kept within the policies. So if Mr. Hyde can tell us what his thoughts are, I would appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, through Chair. I am in favor in making the recommendation that masks be optional for the upcoming school year. As you know, I did get the opportunity to speak with Superintendent Byrd and to several board members prior to my transition during my initial period of appointment or hiring and negotiations, to ensure that I was involved. And I was very appreciative of that and very respectful of the work being done here. The board made a recommendation at that time that I'm very much in agreement with. Even within my current school district, we maintain masks through the end of the school year. As you know, the Center for Disease Control continues to have a banner on their main website that acknowledged and made strong recommendations that masks be continued through the end of the school year. However, we're at a point now where children, school-aged children, ages 12 and above, have ready access to vaccination. We can anticipate that others will have access to vaccination as well. And so as we move forward, as the numbers continue to improve nationally, I did engage with staff here locally. I had good conversations with Mr. Talbot as it related to sports and other extracurricular activities, as you know. Spoke with Mr. Hill, spoke with Superintendent Byrd and others. But I also had a conference call with the Health Department that Ms. Winchester was able to facilitate for me last week. They were also favorable. The only conditions for us moving forward is we would have to continue to adhere to contact tracing, that if a student does demonstrate symptoms, we'll go through their screener, student will arguably be tested, we'll continue to do contact tracing and quarantine and isolation as needed. Hopefully, that's not excessive in the upcoming school year. But again, I believe we're at a point now where providing an optional mask environment is conducive to our ability to move forward. I also had, I should, as a note, have, I did have a brief conversation with union leadership as well, who provided no objection at the time as to the recommendation to make masks optional for the upcoming school year.
Thank you very much.
Yes, go ahead. Ms. Fortney?
Yeah, I totally agree with all that. But I just want to urge everybody that, you know, it's still, I would like to ask and beg that we keep up washing our hands and, you know, the best practices that we know keep all of us from getting sick in general, not just COVID. And, you know, there are some variant strains out there, and it is still a virus that we don't know everything about. I just want to put that out there. But I am in favor of Mr. Hyde's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I really have three things that I'd like to just mention very quickly. First, to Ms. Reynolds' point, if the mask requirement were removed as a policy, it would require a board vote to reinstate. Will it also require a board vote to reinstate if it's still on the books as a policy and we just want to reactivate that policy? Would that still require a board vote?
Mr. Bridges?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Right now, the way your policy is set up, it authorizes the superintendent to activate the policy in times of communicable disease and heightened community spread. And for the board, then, the authority lies with the board to require students to wear masks. If you remove that policy, and if there were to be a, God forbid, a recurrence or whatever, you would have to address it separately, as it is, the policy lies dormant. By board, by board vote today, you can lift the requirement. If you wish to rescind that policy or change that policy, you would need to go through rulemaking, just like, just like you did when this was adopted. So what that means is staff would go through the process of either eliminating that language or revising that language or creating new language to your specifications, bring it to you for a first reading at a work session, and then 30 days later, a public hearing, at which it could be adopted. So if you, if you want to change your policy, you will go through that process. If you do that, and subsequently you wish to reinstate it or something similar, you would have to go through the process again. There's also, there are procedures out there for emergency rulemaking. Fortunately, we did not have to avail ourselves of those last year because of the timing. But in the case of emergency, you can do that. But you went through the regular rulemaking process. That's, that's the process that you would use to change your policy or to rescind this policy. But you may by board vote lift the requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a follow-up?
I do.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just for the benefit of our community, and I know we've all received the emails, I think that from a practical perspective, what I'm hearing is that to reinstate this policy either way, whether it's reinstating, taking the policy out and then reinstating it later, or just leaving it on the books and then reinstating it, still requires board involvement, either way, from a practical perspective. So if I heard Mr. Bridges correctly, is that, is that fair, Mr. Bridges?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I think that, I'm hoping that we can, we can articulate that to the community so they understand that the board still has oversight over this and is responsible for reinstating it, if that needs to be the case sometime in the future. So it's, from a practical perspective, it works either way. And I know there were a lot of folks who said, take it out of the policy, or remove the policy, or, you know, rescind the policy. But I think that the point of this discussion is to make it clear that either way, the board still has oversight over that and a responsibility for reinstating it. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And I will say, too, that I really believe the policy needs to stand. The only thing we're doing is lifting the mandate portion for the masks. But again, we have other board members that can speak. But I think School Board Policy 8450.01, which is what we're referencing, needs to remain in the event sometime in the future, something like this would happen again, superintendent would have the automatic authority to put masks in place if ever needed again. All we're doing is lifting the mandate for the students at this point in time. Do I, am I stating that correctly, Mr. Bridges?
Yeah, we need to be very careful. The, the, the policy allows the superintendent of schools in the, in times of elevated communicable disease, community spread, to activate the policy requiring the grownups to wear masks.
Yes.
And the board may then require students. So for students to wear masks requires board action.
In the code of conduct.
For employees, it does not. The superintendent has the authority under this policy to come in and say, the Health Department has issued a state of emergency. The grownups in this building are going to put masks on, are going to do whatever the guidance is. But only the board can require students to wear masks.
Through the code of conduct.
Under this policy, the code of conduct is the way it is enforced.
Is enforced, okay.
Yes, ma'am. But the requirement is in policy, and it specifically says that the board may require that students kindergarten and higher grades will wear a face mask unless they're unable to do so for a health or developmental reason. And by extension, the board can lift that requirement. It does not require rulemaking or changes to the policy.
Changes or anything. Okay, thank you. Ms. Reynolds?
So that's a little bit of what I was going to highlight, but I really feel like the board should have oversight over both. I think we all have probably received close to 2,000 emails this year about masks, a lot of them from teachers, that I think even if the superintendent's enacting the policy, that the board should be able to make the final decision of masks in buildings for adults or students.
Fair, fair comment. And if, and if the board wishes to revisit that rule, I'm sure the superintendent will be happy to do that.
And that would have to go through rulemaking, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
That's not something we would do.
Yes, ma'am. We would take you through the rulemaking process. And as a matter of courtesy, I'm sure that we would share it with, with our consultant, Neola.
Of course, yes.
We don't necessarily do everything that Neola proposes. But I think when we, when we make changes like that, we share that with them, because there may be other districts in like, in like situation that, to whom that might be useful. But yes, that's how that would work. And so if you, if you wish to have that policy revisited, say the word, and I'm sure our superintendent will put it in the hopper.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Going forward, and then we'll, let's have everybody comment, and then we'll see how the group feels. Mr. Allen, Dr. Allen?
Yep, Madam Chair, thank you. Superintendent Hyde, thanks for being here today, and thanks for your input. This is definitely a celebratory thing, you know, this sense of a little bit of freedom moving forward. So I would recommend that this policy comes back to us, our current policy, PO 8450.01. Because I, my understanding is the language of this policy was meant to deal with a chemical spill or something in relation to that. And I'd like to have some clarification on that, so that our policy is actually written specifically as it relates to COVID-19. And in that process, I'm hoping that we'll have a conversation moving forward. I've got, you know, questions pertaining to this. You know, are we planning to have, you know, conversations that reflect back to our previous COVID-19 data points within our district? I don't think we've had that conversation in regards to active cases that we've had, district-wide, school-wide. Because I think those kinds of data points should be informing our decisions and what the policy looks like moving forward. You know, what worked, what did not work, what was the cost to the district for the call centers, the contact tracing. I would like to have more information on that. I think that would be beneficial to our community, especially as we think about self-isolation and contact tracing moving forward. How many of our students were quarantined? This is really important information that we need to know. How many days were students quarantined throughout the year? And then, again, you know, we've already heard this, but what's our plan as it relates to self-isolation moving forward? Are we eliminating our synchronous learning environments? We definitely need to unpack this more. I think the policy is very arbitrary during times of elevated communicable disease. Can we define that at this point? I don't think we can. I do think that, as Sarah Beth mentioned, that the board should have authority, and it should be mutual as well. And as it relates to code of conduct, I have some, some issues with current languages in that. And so I'm hoping that we'll have a chance to unpack the language if we decide to keep that in the code of conduct. I think there's some elements there for discussion, and I hope we get to that now.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Allen. Let me give a chance for everybody to kind of speak, and then we'll go back and address these points. How's that? Yes, Ms. Miller?
I just have a question for Wes. Since there was already some changes, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, thank you. I have a question for Wes. Since there are already a conversation about changing the actual policy that is reflected in the code of conduct, is it going to go through the rulemaking process again if we're going to change as Mr. Hyde recommended?
Yes, ma'am. That would need to go through the rulemaking process.
Okay.
So if the board wants to go that direction, what we would do is just initiate the process, have a workshop, talk about what ought to be in it, get the language drafted, do a public hearing, and adopt it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Fortney?
Yeah, I definitely.
Excuse me?
I thought you were going around a little better.
No, just those that had their hands up.
My hand, big up, Dan. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Field. Go ahead, Ms. Fortney.
No, 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 you go.
Yeah, I tend to lean this way as well, and mainly because I think it does need to be data-specific. Because you could have, again, I'm going to go back to the variants. You could have one school that is eat up with something. It may not even be COVID. But, you know, we have to be able to react. I kind of look at it with the superintendent, like I would trust them to do the right thing, obviously, but the rogue never really crossed my mind, because I know how people can be. But, you know, they already have the power, like to shut schools down for hurricane prep. You know, I kind of look at it in that sense, you know, case by case. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Ms. Fields?
I think some of the information that Dr. Allen has requested would be almost an update and an overview of where we started and where we currently are. And I would imagine that Mr. Hill and his team have a lot of the information that Dr. Allen is requesting. If we're going to review the policy as it relates to face masks, I would like to see what other neighboring school districts are doing as it relates to that, if we're going to have a thorough review of our policy. So I'm sure that Mr. Bridges and the appropriate staff can do that when they're preparing for the workshop, work session.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In discussing that subject, again, I just, I think it's important, from my perspective, that we were clear with the community because, because we have heard from our community. And we've heard from them probably more on this issue than any other issue since I've, since I've been on the board. So this is what I heard Mr. Bridges say, that as it relates to students, whether we, again, if we rescinded this policy and later chose to reinstate some policy, any policy, or rewrite a policy, whatever you want to call it, it would, it would require board involvement and a board vote. Also, if we choose not to do that and leave the policy in place, it will still require, as it relates to the students, an involvement from the board, and I'm assuming a board vote later on. So from a practical perspective, and I think this is important for the community, either way, it's the same, has the same practical application. Also- way, it's the same, has the same practical application. Also, as it relates to the superintendent having authority over employees, I'm not sure that I agree with changing that, because we have, there are a lot of other, there are a lot of other pieces of that puzzle, including the PEA, that, you know, probably are things that the superintendent should be, should have the ability and authority to address as a superintendent. So I'm not sure that I, as a board, want to involve myself at that level. But I think it's important that we involve ourselves from the perspective of our students. So, those are my thoughts. And I have a couple other comments, although I'll wait if you want to continue with this particular subject.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I would like to, go ahead, Ms. Reynolds.
I was just going to ask to Ms. Fortney's point, we do every year for hurricanes, that if we're in a state of emergency, that the superintendent can make decisions, correct, Wes?
Mm-hmm.
And so that would apply, and in the case of COVID, when we were in a state of emergency, if it had to come to the board to approve masks, but we were in the state of emergency, the superintendent would then have the authority to do that.
I think that policy was specifically geared toward hurricane season. We can look at it and see if the language is broad enough, or if we would need to change that.
Okay. Because that was kind of my thought to Ms. Fortney's point, that I want, I would like the board to be involved in it, but I do see the need that, obviously, if it's, if we're in a state of emergency and don't have a meeting on the books for another week and need to enact something, that I believe the superintendent has the authority to make actions in a state of emergency.
And because this is a little bit legalistic, I think it's important to pay attention to the precision of the language that's currently there, what it says. During times of elevated communicable disease, community spread, the superintendent may activate this policy by notifying the school community requiring all school and district staff, volunteers, and visitors, including vendors, to wear appropriate face masks and coverings on district grounds unless it's unsafe to do so, or where doing so would significantly interfere with the district's educational or operational processes. That provision has nothing to do with students whatsoever. It has to do with superintendent taking immediate action to protect the safety of the school in the event of an emergency such as that. But that's the precise language in your policy. And I think probably, if you wish to revisit this policy, you'll have the opportunity to talk to all aspects of it, how it applies to employees, how it applies to visitors, how it applies to students, and how specifically you wish for it to be activated or implemented. But you would have the opportunity to keep some, or all, or none of this policy, or direct the creation of a completely different policy.
Right. So it gives the superintendent authority then over not only staff, but also parents and volunteers and community workers?
The way I describe it is, as the policy stands, the superintendent can control the conduct of the grownups on the campus, where it comes to requiring face coverings in these limited circumstances. The board is the entity that may require students to wear face coverings. Superintendent does not have that independent authority. Only the board can require it of students. But the superintendent can require it of the staff and visitors and vendors, the grownups who are lawfully on the campus.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to be clear that we do, it would be useful for the public and our own records to have the follow-up to COVID. And we've had some of that, some of that data's been given to us as far as expenses with CARES money, and we've gone over that, and Mr. Hill has presented on the numbers. But if the boards decides that we need like a recovery work session, that would be important to give. But that's not directly related to this policy. So I want to make sure that's completely two different things.
Right.
And when we're having the conversation, as it reads, it could apply to any pandemic or national emergency or emergency, so that we need to make sure, when we're revisiting it through the rulemaking process, that we make that intentional language not directed at one certain instant, because then it won't be useful if it's needed.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And I agree. So I think there's, we have two different things on the table today. We're discussing the lifting of the masks for students, and we're discussing looking at the policy, and what specifically is in there, and who has what jurisdiction over what group of folks, along with, you know, what's the data. So my thought was, if you're in favor of this, we could vote, yea or nay, up or down, the lifting of the mandate tonight. And then, if Superintendent Hyde is in agreement at the July 27th work session, maybe we could bring that policy forward, and also ask Mr. Hill if he would be so kind and give us an update on the COVID statistics, I think is what I'm hearing, costs, numbers, you know, all of that, which I think Dr. Allen outlined so nicely today. And then that way, we can address both and move forward with this before school starts. Am I, okay, Ms. Fortney?
I just want to bring up one as a forethought, because when we unpack this, that quarantining has been an issue.
Yes.
And, you know, we had to quarantine even when kids were in masks. That was just, I never understood that. But it doesn't matter if I understand stuff or not sometimes. But moving forward, those kids that were quarantined, I'd like to see something in place that allows them not to fall behind. The e-learning option, I know we're probably not going to have that in 21, 22, but maybe for our quarantine kid, have a plan for, so people know what to expect, instead of, I can't get a computer from here, or blah, 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 blah. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Superintendent Hyde?
So if I may, just a couple of quick things. So, as it relates to board policy and rulemaking, I have heard, I want to make sure, I just want to seek some clarification. Quite frankly, the hurricane emergency responsiveness is not explicit enough to this. To Dr. Allen's point, the recommendation that I'm hearing from the board, a request from the board, is that I engage with Mr. Bridges and the team to develop an explicit policy related to these types of medical events. For the community's clarification, in our history across the nation, we've never mandated masks simply because of a personal interest or personal bias. It is largely, if not entirely, driven based off local or federal recommendations. In this instance, that's exactly where it stemmed from. So as far as the ability for it to occur again at scale will be driven based off the numbers, the actual number of cases and the types of events we're dealing with. However, the only thing I would ask for the board, and I'll address with Mr. Bridges and others, is the ability to act in real time.
Yes.
And that is important, because, and here's why, and I want to provide this clarification more so for the community and for others, is that if there's an outbreak, as defined by the Florida Health Department or Polk County Health Departments, as five or more cases that are shown to be linked that occur within a specified period of time, that at times could constitute the closure of a classroom, or even the closure of a school building. That, to Ms. Fortney's point, is the instance where masks might have to be implemented for a short period of time, in order to prevent an entire closure for two weeks of a whole school campus. So those are the types of things that we'll have to work through. The pandemic is unique. It has never happened in any of our histories. And so having a policy that explicitly addresses these types of events, I think makes more sense than trying to piecemeal it into other language areas. So I'll work with Mr. Bridges and others on rulemaking there. We will definitely bring you an update on the COVID statistics and expenses and costs. I was remiss earlier, we will maintain a higher level of cleaning and reinforcing handwashing in those face coverings, as far as covering your mouth and nose when you sneeze and cough, those types of things, you know, those high-touch areas, we'll continue to clean and disinfect. We still continue to encourage masks for anybody who's not vaccinated, but we're giving the option and flexibility to families and staff to make those decisions. One final point to Dr. Allen's request, that is, there was something you brought up as far as what do we do with students who are quarantined? What are the expectations for those students? Right now, we have sought guidance from the Florida Department of Education as to what their expectations are. In my current state that I'm transitioning from, as an example, the state mandates that any time a student is quarantined, they must be provided real-time instruction daily. However, given our circumstance, given the fact that we just culminated a year of a hybrid model, where teachers were teaching both in-person and synchronously at the same time, that is a conversation I need to engage Ms. Yocum and others with, to make sure that we have a robust plan. However, we are giving families the option as well to continue with Polk Virtual if they so choose. So I will bring something forward. I don't know that we will have something definitively explicitly, as far as an MOU finalized by July 27th. We'll work to do what we can. But I know there's a lot of information I have to gather, and a lot of feedback from staff as to how to best support those needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. Dr. Allen?
So, thank you, Mr. Hyde. As we think about, you know, the authority factors and so forth, as it relates to this, the current policy as it stands, I think as we get deeper into the language of that, there's other concerns that we should be addressing as well, as I reflect back on the emails, communication with parents and so forth. So, fifth paragraph down, for you reference Mr. Bridges, "The board may require that students in kindergarten and higher grades shall wear a face mask unless they are unable to do so for a health or developmental reason." There's been a lot of discussion of how that was implemented as it relates to the code of conduct, and moving forward for some of those opportunities from a developmental reason. So I think we need to clarify what that means, if this is going to stand. And then, "Efforts will be made to reduce any social stigma." Again, I would love to have reflection back on how we were currently implementing some of these statements, so we can know if we've implemented this correctly. My understanding is, we've had some issues with that. But efforts will be made to reduce any social stigma. So what were the efforts that were made to reduce that social stigma, or, you know, the opportunity to not wear a mask due to health or developmental reasons? I think that's important as well for particular groups. As it relates to the code of conduct, I would, I know Mr. Butler's in the back there, do we have specific policies that relate to other specific garments? Like, for example, do we have a code of conduct policy that specifically relates to students wearing socks? And I know that's a silly one, but I know as we're going to make adjustments to the policy, where the face coverings isn't necessarily applied specifically to our COVID situation, it's at any time that a face covering is worn by a student? I'm just curious how detailed we go currently within our code of conduct as it relates to what students are wearing.
It is quite detailed as far as it addresses issues. For example, it is exclusionary for certain items, right?
Mm-hmm.
However, in this case, because masks are not going to remain in the code of conduct forever, in the dress code for eternity, in those instances, because they're optional, we felt the need to address them explicitly in the code. But if a student, to your point, if a student were wearing socks, and were wearing shorts, and the socks weren't appropriate, we would address it through the dress code.
Mm-hmm.
We have that flexibility.
Gotcha.
But again, it's just the nature of the fact that it's only living there temporarily due to this issue, that we felt the need to keep it in there.
Dr. Allen, are you thinking?
I'll hold off there for right now.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Fortney?
I wanted to reiterate what Mr. Hyde said. When we did this, we only went by what we were told, and what we thought was best for kids and staff, to keep as many people safe as possible, because we knew that a large high school was not going to be able to social distance, or, you know, or bus. So I want people to understand that I personally, speaking for myself, had no ulterior motive that I have been accused of having. You know, I simply wanted to look out for the safety of our staff and students as much as possible. And I just wanted to put that out there. You know, we followed exactly what we were told as far as the data at the time, and I think we did a pretty good job. That's what I think. So, and now we're adjusting, because it is adjustable. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Ms. Fields?
I just want to let it be on record that I agree with Mr. Wilson, as it relates to the superintendent being able to decide whether or not employees need to wear masks based on whatever the emergency situation may be. Because if it is an emergency situation, we don't have a meeting planned that could pose some serious problems. So, I know we're going to have discussion, but I want to make sure that before the staff start working on that, that it's not anything that I'm going to be in support of. And also, I agree with Ms. Miller, as it relates to the information that Dr. Allen wants to know, with all of the historical knowledge, and how we can make things better going forward, it's not related to the policy itself. So, we need to make sure that we separate those two things out.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Anyone else? Ms. Miller?
I just have a question, Madam Chair, again for Wes. When we're reviewing the policy and going back through the rulemaking process, do we need to be specific with charter schools that have their own boards for governance to use our policies? Because we had implementation issues this time around. We had implementations in our own schools, with kids not always allowed outside without their masks. But we saw, what we've heard from the public is, we've had charter schools that have their own governance, their own codes of conduct, implementing our mask suggestions, but not what we were doing in the schools. They had their own set of, you know, their own set of rules of how they would be implemented at the school. Do we need to be specific in the rulemaking process to distinguish between the two, or is that something that's assumed because of the different board of governance for those schools?
I think that that is inherent in the governance of charter schools. They can agree to use our code of student conduct, for instance, or they can agree not to, or they can amend it to their use. If they do decide they do it, usually that's because it saves them a great deal of trouble developing their own. But frequently, you will have situations where they adopt ours with changes, sort of like what we do with Neola's standard policy. Sometimes we adopt their recommendation, but with changes. But I think the obligations will be, and responsibilities will be on the charter schools, to decide what their rules are going to be, and how to comply and enforce those. And if someone were to bring a complaint to the district about the charter school and how they're implementing requirements for face masks, we would look and see what they have adopted. But in most instances, that's going to be on them, not on us. And our response would be, if you have an issue without the charter schools implemented, that is something you need to take up with the governing board and charter school, not the school board.
And along that line, I think that's for more than just this policy. Just last week, I had a different situation with a charter implementing our bullying policy. So what you've said is, they can take, but they weren't doing it how we implement it. They were modifying what we do, with our name on the documents. Is that something, so they can take our code of conduct, or they can take our rules or suggestions and modify them without identifying that it's a modification?
You mean, without pointing out this is different from what the school board does?
Yes, yes.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, they, and once again, if there's a complaint about how they're implementing whatever they've adopted, that is an issue for them to address, and not the district.
I just think that confuses the public a little bit.
If they are not complying with state or federal law,
Right.
Then that is something that we would take up. But if they've adopted our conduct, and they enforce it differently, or use a different range of penalties, you know, that's on them, I think. One thing to, to close off with, I think it's very important to remember that we are at a very different place in June of 2021 than we were when this policy was adopted. The school districts in Florida were able to open, in large part, more rapidly than schools in other parts of the country, largely in part, or largely because of the instruction given to districts, we want you to do it, but we want you to do so safely. And to do that, you need to comply with the recommendations of the appropriate public health agencies. That included the CDC, that included the State Department of Health, the county departments of health. And that guidance has been changing over time, and it has changed recently. But it's very important to go back and remember what the guidance was at the time this policy was implemented. And without face coverings, without social distancing... And without face coverings, without social distancing, without the disinfectant procedures, without all the things that the districts were doing, not Polk County, statewide, without the things that we were doing, schools would never have been able to open. You know, Florida really is set apart from the rest of the United States in the way that schools opened here. But as that happened, it was done, it took some courage to make those decisions, but it also, they also came with caveats and said, we want you to open your schools, but we want you to do so safely, and the best guidance that we have for you right now is this. And as that guidance has changed, the practices in the schools have changed. And here we are today with a recommendation to lift the face covering requirement for students in schools. Hallelujah.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Mr. Wilson?
So, I have a couple of things. I'd like to make an appeal to our incoming superintendent. The one has to do with the fact that COVID is still a very real problem and is still very dangerous. And we will be, I mean, if, it sounds like we're gonna be removing the requirement for the face mask as of the start of the coming year, but it's still a serious matter. So, I would appeal to our superintendent to continue to consider those of our employees who have health issues and give them priority in helping them to avoid any problems or any contacts they may have with folks who have COVID. Like, for example, that may include virtual teaching, for example, as well as our older teachers and employees. To the extent that we can help them, I would appeal to you to do that. And again, I'm thinking specifically of teachers and the possibility of teaching virtually. The other thing I'd like to appeal to superintendent is this. There was a study by MIT. It came out at the end of April. In my opinion, that study had the most comprehensive methodology of any study I've ever seen. It was incredible. And essentially, it's a study on viruses in general, not just COVID. And they talked about the fact that masks work, much like we tell our children to sneeze or to cough into their elbow or into a handkerchief to, you know, slow the spread of bodily emissions. Masks work the same way. But they said to the extent that you're not, that masks aren't required in a particular environment, the single most important thing you can do is filtration. And so, I'm hoping we can use some of our CARES money to do a comprehensive survey of our facilities throughout the district and see what we can do to improve our filtration systems. Frankly, if you read that study, what it says to me is if you have really effective filtration systems, and that's, there are a lot of pieces to that, but if you have really effective filtration systems, you can significantly impact the spread of any virus. And that would be helpful, not just because of COVID, but for flus and colds in general as well, and help to keep our students healthy and in the classroom. So, I'm hoping we have a lot of CARES money. I'm hoping we could use some of that to take a look at our filtration systems in our schools. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Miller?
Sorry, I just had one follow up. We keep referring to students, but this will also apply to staff in district offices as well as, so the mask mandate will apply to everyone under the school district, not just students.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Fortney?
Back to what Mr. Wilson said, when we gathered as a task force, that was my big thing, was filtration. I brought it up numerous times in board meetings, and I know Ms. Usher and her team are working on that retrofit. She was kind enough to invite me to the presentation because I'm a science teacher and I understood some of the terminology, et cetera. So, that is in the works. I think it's a matter of finding the right fit because it is, moving forward, it is what's best for our buildings, you know, in general. I have friends that have been in the hospital a couple of times from sick buildings that we maintain under workman's comp. Speaking of which, I don't know if this is appropriate time or not, but, you know, we have teachers and staff that have used their, all their sick days because of this quarantine. And I'm asking Mr. Hyde if he could look into that. They have lost pay, and it's not by their choice. They had no symptoms. They were told they had to stay home, and they did. And they lost pay. And to me, that is, we're not helping our staff by punishing them for doing what they're told. So, if you could look into that, Mr. Hyde, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Ms. Reynolds?
I just wanna clarify for Ms. Miller's comment. Technically, we only have the authority to lift the mask mandate for the students. Lifting it for anyone else would have to come from Mr. Hyde.
That's the way the policy is written, but Mr. Hyde has given that indication.
Okay. I just wanna make it clear that we only have the authority to do it for the students.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Okay, any other comments on this subject? If not, we will bring forward a motion this evening, and then we will move forward depending on the vote accordingly. And as stated, we have the authority to vote for the K through 12 students in our district. And then I'm hoping in some way or fashion Superintendent Hyde will be able to follow up and perhaps make an announcement or do a letter. Can you tell us what thoughts you have on that? How do we move forward so everybody knows?
So, what I can do is work with Mr. Hill and, or Deputy Superintendent Hill and Superintendent Byrd, and we can put a memo out to staff.
Perfect. Okay, thank you, sir, very much. And would it have the same effective date of tomorrow, June 9?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yes, Ms. Fields?
So, tonight, when we have the motion before us, is it going to be added to the agenda? Because the one that we have now is blank. So, are we gonna add that?
Yeah, I've already done it. Yes, I'll get with you and get you the motion. All righty, thank you. Or if you'd like, do you want me to read it? Would that help you if I read it?
I just wanna make sure that it's there tonight. I mean, you can read it, it doesn't matter. It's on the agenda for tonight.
Okay, I'll get with Wendy, and if you can add that to the agenda tonight, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Dr. Allen?
Yep, just last question for clarification. So, what we're voting on tonight is for us to move forward with a mask optional environment for the 21-22. But also, are we voting on the language for the code of conduct?
No, that will be brought to us at a later date. That's on the July 27th work session, I believe, and meeting is the code of conduct.
Okay.
And also, the workshop now will bring forth the policy. So, hopefully, we can all look at them both, tie it together, and understand going forward where we are. But no, it is not addressing the code of conduct. Am I correct?
Madam President, Chair, if I may, I'm bringing Mr. Butler to the microphone. He may have a greater sense of urgency as far as his ability to get the code of conduct printed and available.
Okay.
So, Mr. Butler?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, welcome.
So, we brought forth in all the changes for the code of conduct at our last meeting. Today, Mr. Bridges would be asking to public notice for the July meeting, any changes. So, if we wanted to make any changes still in that window, it would need to be done today. If not, he would public notice what is currently out there. That would go to board with what's currently in the code of conduct right now, if that makes sense. Then we would need to go back and change it again, public notice, and then go to board probably about November, if I'm thinking correctly, with the 30 days in between meetings.
Probably going to be before that. If there were additional changes, they would probably be brought at the same time that the changes the board's already talking to, to 8450.
And the only other thing I can offer as a suggestion is one of the proposals that I think that you all have already received.
Yes.
On that note section, you could put face coverings are optional for the 2021-22 school year unless it becomes required by District Board Policy 8450.01 or otherwise mandated by state or federal authorities. I add the Board District Policy 8450.01. And then if you change 8450.01, no matter what you change in it, it applies to this as written here on out.
Can you tell me what page you would add that to?
Yes, ma'am, I do believe it's in the code of conduct under page seven or eight.
Okay.
So, you gotta skip all the Roman numeral ones.
Hang on, I'm getting there.
Go right ahead.
So, what you're saying is with a blank statement, we would be ensuring, okay.
Yes, ma'am. So, under what is currently in there.
Yes, under face covering, great.
We would change that.
Yep.
Under face covering, and I'm trying to get to it myself.
Yes, sir. So, it's under dress, section 2.06, dress code?
So, we would eliminate where it starts with face coverings, grades K through 12, we would eliminate only applicable when the wearing of face covering is required by the district. That would be eliminated. And it would start with, at any time that a face covering is worn by a student for the purpose of protecting the health, safety, or welfare of the student or staff, it must cover the nose, mouth, and fit snugly against the sides of the student's face with little or no gaps. During times when the face coverings are required by the district, students must wear the face covering when on school grounds or district provided transportation unless the student is involved in an approved activity when a face covering would not be necessary or appropriate. All face coverings must comply with general dress code and school uniform requirements. And again, we would put the asterisks of grades K through 1 or in developmental stages upon the first nine weeks of entering school so we wouldn't penalize any student who wasn't wearing it right off the bat. And then we would have the note, face coverings are optional for the 2021-22 school year unless it becomes required by District Board Policy 8450.01 or otherwise mandated by state or federal authorities.
So, what you're saying is that's currently not in the one that we've seen, but you're saying we could add that as of today.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it's gotten to go.
And then it would be public notice tonight.
Is there a way that that could be typed out for everybody to see that? Do you have copies already? Look at you, I love it.
The only thing that is not.
Sorry.
As we were having conversation, if I may, I asked Mr. Butler if he would amend the changed, the language proposal I submitted to the board.
Yes.
And have him include a direct reference to the board policy. So, that's the only significant change from the document you're receiving now. Ms. Reynolds, that's to your question about where does that policy, where does that authority derive from? It doesn't derive from the student code of conduct, it's derived from the school board policy. So, that's the only change in here, as he noted, is that in that note section below, after the word district, it would include the school board actual policy, but we can provide another updated form for this evening.
That was gonna be my question.
Yep, that would be great. Yep, so we know what we're moving forward.
I can go on, retype this and add the part where I just told you where it says required by District Board Policy 8450.01. And Mr. Bridges will also have the updated copy of the actual full code of conduct with it listed on the schedule of changes for tonight.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, Dr. Allen?
Sure. Thank you, sir. I would recommend that we strike the or otherwise mandated by state or federal authorities because that would then be included in that overarching policy. I just believe that we need to be making decisions based on our community at large and not the nation at large. And in general, I'm not in favor of the code of conduct policy just because we already have policy that relates to garments and what students are wearing. So, I think our code of conduct policy already would protect, because I think what I heard earlier in our conversation was that we're just trying to protect so there's no messaging and different things like that on the mask. Is that correct?
To be consistent with our code of conduct and our dress code, yes.
Right. So, is there necessity to actually have that particular policy if we already have blanket statements that relates to particular elements of branding and so forth on clothing?
Well, and to your question earlier, I did go back and revisit this in our student code of conduct. We are explicit as to particular garments. We are skirts, shorts, pants, shirts. So, it is an extension of that. So, we do have that explicit language in there as to the type of garment as well.
Okay.
And furthermore, this also, by having mask in this section of the code of conduct, limits the way it can be enforced unless it becomes outright insubordination. And that was one of the reasons we put it under dress code to begin with because it was more of a learning type thing than automatic enforcement of a punishment.
It may also be useful to know that if the board revises its underlying policy 8450, it may be necessary to make changes to the code of student conduct at that time to reflect those changes, and we would do that at the same time.
Same time. So, you're, so the thought was for you to insert in that note the reference to the actual school board policy 84.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think that's very important to tie the two together so that, okay. Ms. Reynolds?
I just wanted to clarify, if we're looking at the policy at our work session on the 27th.
Yes.
And then we have a board meeting that first Tuesday in September, which will be over the 30 days. So, we could then have the policy changed by the first week in September? Is that child-wise correct?
If we have the finalized language at the end of July, we could advertise a public hearing for the board meeting in September. Yes, ma'am.
So, we would just need to have the finalized language?
If we don't have the finalized language at that time, we'd have to bring it back in August and then advertise. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Butler, for the response to Mr. Allen. And I think, but I think that's a valid question he has about having a policy in place for dress. And I think what I heard you say, and if you could clarify, please, was that under the regular dress policy, there are necessary and automatic sanctions or punishment, but because it's a separate policy, we don't have to be as strict with those sanctions, for lack of a better word?
Dress code is a local code, not a state mandated code. So, that is a little bit different there. So, it's not a Cessor, per se, and therefore, we have the ability to judge the range of enforcement. That does not preclude a student from outright refusing to do something. Then it falls in a whole nother category. But if a student is out of dress code compliant, we've made a range of enforcements that we can use at any given time versus going all the way with a Cessor.
And I guess my question is, we can be less restrictive with our face, with our current policy, face mask policy than we would with the dress code. Is that, did I stand that correctly or no? Did I misunderstand? No?
No, sir. It would fall under the same with the dress code.
Okay, so I think that then brings us back to Mr. Allen's question. Why do we need, why do we need a face mask policy if the dress code covers it?
Because the dress code prohibits certain things from being worn and allows other things to be worn. This is stating when something is required to be worn.
Okay.
So, therefore, it can be enforced because it is specifically stated in the code.
Okay, so, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Fields?
Mr. Butler, why do we have the last sentence, "are otherwise mandated by state or federal authorities"?
As we were working with this with the attorneys over the last couple of days, that was just something that we thought that should be put in. But if you all are of the feelings that it should not be, then we can take out that last part.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of taking it off. I just wanted to know why it was added because I don't know if it could eventually impact funding. I don't know from the state level if we don't do what's required. Could that impact our funding? So, I was just wanting to know why it was added.
It was through legal counsel.
Okay, well, I'm not interested, I'm not interested in having it removed. I just wanted to know why it was added.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
There are authorities that supersede our own, and I think that's why it's included in there is because there will be time, there could be a time as it was initially with COVID where masks were mandated outside of a school district, and there are concerns with potential sanctions. You're absolutely correct. The potential closure, forced closure of a school building or facility, and there could arguably have been funding implications as well. That was never threatened, but it's always a possibility. So, we default to state or federal-led So we default to, to state or federal legislation and/or authority.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Ms., Dr. Allen?
Great, yeah, I appreciate that clarification. Again, I think if we just had it, that it was attached back to the policy, because the policy does, the current policy as it stands in alignment with public health officials and/or in accordance with government edicts and including any pandemic plan developed by the district's pandemic response team. So our, our current policy already puts that in place in written form, not sure why it would have to have redundancy on that side of the conversation.
Someone want to answer that? Do you, are you looking for an answer? We need to.
I can provide a generic explanation. I mean, part of this is where does the information reside? And who is it intended to provide clarification to? School Board Policy is reviewed far less than the Student Code of Conduct is. And so to have duplicity, it may be favorable to our families for transparency purposes. Because again, ultimately, the authority resides with the board policy, but there aren't a lot of people that go back on a daily basis or yearly basis and review board policy. Parents do review the Student Code of Conduct to ensure, and we require a signature or, or an acknowledgement that they've read and understand the expectations for students each year. So I think that's, becomes really that handbook for families that they refer to on a regular basis. I, I just see it as a, as a point to provide further clarification and be more, as transparent as we possibly can be.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. Thank you, Dr. Allen. Ms. Reynolds?
I tend to agree with Dr. Allen, mainly just because in practice this year, we didn't have a state mask mandate in Florida, but many counties did have county mask mandates, and we're not including that in our list of state or federal. So it seems like pointing them back to the Code of Conduct or back to the policy where everything's included may be a better practice if we're looking at government edicts as being a reason to require them.
Ms. Fortney?
I was just saying you could add county to that. But, you know, policy or Code of Conduct is only as good as it's enforced. And, you know, we have issues with wearing Crocs to school, earbuds, phones, that was, that was probably, you know, it's all about communication and expectation. And so, you know, as specific as we can get, I think it helps our administrators and our teachers and our bus drivers to all be on the same page, which is almost impossible in a normal day, let alone a pandemic day. So, you know, that's up to us, I think, and that's on us. And I'm gonna shut up about it, because I'm ready to take it off myself, but.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Any other comments or clarifications? So to summarize the discussion, tonight, we're going to go ahead and vote on to lift the mask mandate for our students. Superintendent Hyde and Superintendent Byrd and Deputy Superintendent Hill are gonna work together and draft a letter addressing our staff across the district as well, so that the adults match what we're doing for the children. And then we've asked staff to please prepare a presentation and a discussion for the board regarding Policy 8450.01 in order to tie all the loose ends, if you will, together and discuss authority, authority moving forward. And I too am gonna support keeping the superintendent in charge of making those decisions as we move forward. I think it's just, like Mr. Wilson said, too much to put on the board, but certainly, it's a discussion that we need to have as a seven-member board. So is there anything else that we need to address regarding masks and face coverings? Seeing none, I'd like to turn the work session back over to Deputy Superintendent Hill to continue our work session today. Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we'll go to our first item on the agenda, which is ID, the IDEA grant allocation and Assistant Superintendent Learning. Dr. Joshua Lutz will be coming up to discuss that with us.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
You should have in front of you our allocation for the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act Grant for 2021-2022. Before I get into the specifics, I want to formally recognize the Learning Support Division's Budgetary Accountant, Ms. Vicki Griffiths, she's here with us today. Typically, we have three to four weeks to prepare this document. We received it yesterday. And she worked tirelessly all day yesterday to get all this information together so that we could present it and have it voted on this evening. So Vicki, I want to publicly thank you for the hard work. And I hope she's blushing or embarrassing, I can't really see her.
Behind the mask, of course.
Yeah, behind the mask, of course. And I may suffer some payback from that when we get back to the office later. But the summary is your first-page document. We were allocated this year two separate amounts. The first amount being our federal IDEA Part B through K through 12 is $26,516,817. And our federal IDEA Part B for pre-K is $451,750. So the total allotment is $26,968,567. It's a touch lower than we had last year, but not significantly. You can see the breakdown for K-12 and pre-K services on your sheet there. I'll entertain any questions that you may have about the breakdown of the allocation.
Are you anticipating an increase from what you've heard? Or a decrease because of COVID, or what are you saying?
I believe that everything has been finalized. We have to turn this back into the state by June 16th.
Yes, sir.
And have this signed copy by June 30th. I don't believe there'll be any changes. I think we're, we're stuck with this amount.
Okay.
I, we have not heard one way or the other of any potential increase. There are items within this that could be offset by S R 2 and S R 3 funds, I'm working with finance to see if we can pull that out. This is inclusive of a $4.1 million pull forward from last year. So our actual allocation was about $22.4 million with a $4.1 million pull forward from last year.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Miller?
I just have a couple of questions. First, I think it's a good time to make the statement that IDEA is federal money that comes to the state. It was never fully funded. IDEA should be funded at 40% and then go to the states. It's funded at 14. So trying to do all the services that are required by law with not a lot of money puts us in a hard situation sometimes. So I appreciate the staff that's trying to make that happen and what you've listed here. I have two questions. One, can you talk about what part of IDEA is, I don't know if we have the amount here, for parent support or parent education and how we're gonna use that? And secondly, you were not here when we did a study on our services that we paid over $200,000 to do. Can you tell us where we are, where, if you've been familiarized with that? And if you are working, how we, where we are in the update from that study?
Sure. If I can answer your questions in reverse.
Okay.
On the study that was done by PCG, I recently provided a copy to Mr. Hyde. And having gone through it recently, without actually looking at each of the line items, about 70% of that study's recommendations have already been implemented in the district. And there are some other areas they have offered to come back and assist, though there's a price tag to that, of course. So we're under consideration for right now. And there are some other ideas that I have based on that study and based on climate surveys or surveys that I've done with staff where I think we may be able to more effectively use some of our resources that we have. As far as the parent education, there's not a specific line item in the budget that addresses that, though we do use our IDEA discretionary funds to help support the ESE Advisory Committee in their quarterly meetings. And we have a separate grant through Fiddler's Finns that also provides for parent education.
Thank you. I'd like to make a suggestion, and we've, in, in the past, and it's just a suggestion from someone who worked in advocacy for a long time, to look at some of the other districts, like Orange County and some of the other departments that we have in this district that provide parent liaisons to be a middle person, to help people understand the processes and make sure we have that for people, not only who speak English, but maybe English is not their first language. I think that would alleviate a lot of, a lot of the phone calls and a lot of the things that come to your ESE area managers, who I'm sure are over, overworked already.
Thank you, that was actually a discussion point Mr. Hyde and I had during our very first meeting togethers on looking at establishing parent liaisons. So that discussion is something to be continued. And I know that he is interested in exploring that as well. Don't mean to speak for you, sir. But I have the email that says you're interested in exploring.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. And I just want to echo what Ms. Miller said. It is so tragic that our federal government did not fund, did not fully fund the IDEA legislation and agreed to fund it at 40%, but only funds it at roughly 14%. It's tragic. And so the folks who work with our special needs students are truly heroes. They, they have significantly limited resources to work with. And, you know, I don't, I don't know how we, we make that case to the federal government, I'm not sure there's a way to do that. Do you have any ideas, Ms. Miller?
Well, I mean, there was, there has been discussion, and you may have more information on this through the current administration, that that was a goal of theirs. But I don't have updates to what they're working on.
I don't have any updates or any relevant information for that right now, other than it has been discussed. But absolutely, we, we make the very best with what little we're given. And I know $26 million sounds like a lot, but in a district this size, for us to be able to use our pull-forward funds and not come begging for local money to, to provide services is, you know, it's a credit to our staff that do a lot with, with limited resources.
Yeah, and I just want to say thank you to, to those folks who work with our special needs students.
They work hard and they're very, very passionate about what they do.
I would, the one suggestion I would make is I've reached out to new congressmen that, you know, has been recently elected, and I just think more people, they just don't know. So I think if the board members, as you're having conversations with delegation members, that you remind them of this and how important it is to their community, then I think it would be helpful.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Lutz? All right. Please, thank your team again for us, great job. You worked hard to get that done in such a short time.
Oh, and one just item for clarification. The copies that you all received were in black and white, so you didn't actually see our student counts because they were in gray. So they're on pages 26 through 30. Our eligible private school students are 701 students eligible for ESE. 1, 14,159 public school students aged 3 to 21. So a total of 14,860 students in the district. And, and our pre-K numbers are 961 pre-K students eligible for special education services at this time.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We'll go, move forward with our next item, our ratings review. And Heather Jenkins, Acting Chief Finance Officer, will come up to present for us.
Good afternoon. I'd like to talk with you guys a little bit about our, our ratings review. And I'm gonna try and put it in layman terms. As I was thinking of how to explain this, it seemed, it seemed a little complicated when it's not something you deal with every day. So in January, there's an agency, it's called Moody's, and they basically look at our credit rating, and they change the way that they look at school districts and the criteria that they use. So what that meant is we were subject to be downgraded. What ratings do is they look, it's a forward-looking option at your credit risk, which is the ability to meet your contractual needs, and also any estimate in financial or funding losses. We have long-term ratings, which is an original maturity of a year or more, that's based on the type of, of loans we have. They're our COPs and our sales tax ratings. Fortunately, we, we worked with Moody's and answered several questions, and we were able to maintain our current ratings. We were not downgraded. So our, let's see, our COPs rating is at an AA3. And what that means is that we have a high-quality credit, and we're subject to very little risk. So that means we're a good rid, good credit risk when it comes to our COPs ratings. Our sales tax bonds were also rated at AA3, which is the same, same thing, we're at a good risk. And we have $323 million in outstanding debt. So the reason that we have an AA2 rating for our, for our overall rating is because we have a diverse and growing tax base. Our property values are going up. We have a lot of people moving into Polk County, and that drives increasing enrollment. So if that stays steady, that's what they based our, our overall rating on, the fact that we're growing as a county. We do, though, however, have a low residential income per capita. So our residents don't make as much money as they do in, in other districts in the state of Florida. So that, that's a piece that would actually take some points away when they're looking at our score. Our COPs rating, our COPs are, it's a, a share of the lease payments that we pay back using our 1.5 mils. You're familiar with our capital outlay tax. And our sales tax bond, we have relatively low debt. We are bringing in enough sales tax to cover that debt. So that helps us stand in a, in a positive standing with sales tax. So each year, periodically, they do ratings reviews. This year, it was just special because they changed our criteria. So as we move forward, things that could lead to an upgrade in our ratings are an increase in our financial position or reserves, which mean we continue to grow our fund balance. If we have improved wealth and income levels in our county, that's if our salaries are brought up and our residents are able to make more money. And if we have an upgraded issuer rating for our COPs. Some things that could, could lower our credit rating are erosion to our financial position or liquidity. That means if we have a decrease to our fund balance or any of our investments were to be placed in an account that didn't have an immediate liquidity, which is against our policy, so we don't have to worry about that. A downgrade of our COPs rating or decline in debt service coverage. So overall, what does all this mean? It means that whenever, when they look at our credit ratings, whenever we need to build a new school or we need to do any type of repair that would require us to take out a loan or bond money, our credit rating is an important factor in whether or not we are allowed to do that. So that's why we have to keep it strong. And I have a 48-page description on, that talks all about credit ratings. If any of you would like to see it, I'll be happy to send it to you. Do you guys have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, Ms. Cunningham.
Okay, so I understand the AA2 rating is our overall rating for the district. And then the AA3 COPs and AA3 sales tax were stronger. So my question is, what have we been up until now? Have we always been AA2? What's, what's our history?
AA2 is actually stronger than AA3.
Okay.
We've been AA2 for a while. When I was here, it was AA2.
Okay.
We have not been downgraded.
We have not been down, okay.
To my knowledge, I can get the, I can go back in history and send that to you if you'd like me to.
No, that's fine. I just, when I had some conversations, I was told that it's gonna be great news that we've increased. So I, I wasn't really sure what, what the historic piece is. So are we celebrating today? Because we've gone up, or are we celebrating because we've maintained and they did not send us back?
It's great news that we've maintained because the first two conversations I had with them, they said, "Prepare for a decrease."
I see.
So it's.
Right, because that's huge. Right, because that's huge.
It goes, it basically falls down to, they also look at your financial reporting. So the biggest pieces were that we have grown our fund balance and that we are recognized for strong and reliable financial reporting.
Okay.
And also a little growth in the county.
In the county as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just want, to be sure.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. All righty, that's the only question I had.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson.
So I'm, you know, when I first started on this board, we had some derivatives that this board eliminated over a period of time. I'm sure that would have been, had a negative impact on that rating had we still had those derivatives on our books. So I think that played a big role in, in helping us keep a higher rating. But I really have a question about the millage rollback. It seems like that there's a possibility that will continue at least into the near future. Is that your assessment?
They did not roll back the millage rate this year.
I'm sorry, that they, the fact that they did not roll it back, that's what I meant to say.
Yes, sir. It is my assumption that they will, that that will maintain through, through this year and a little while going forward. It all depends every year. When they go back, you, you never really know the results of the legislative session. We will know for certain in around July sixteenth, that's when we usually know actually for sure what our millage rate is. We learn the official rate in the second calculation.
But the state won't roll it back this year?
They have said they will not.
You know, and I, and we'll have an opportunity to talk Ms. Dodge about a little bit later, I know, but I think that's great news. And, and I, I have a feeling that if they choose not to do that for successive years, it tends to stick. And, and that would be terrific because it would allow us the opportunity to increase salaries for our employees, and that will help with this rating as well, I think. So I wasn't at the last meeting when they announced that, but had I been, I would have thrown a small party right here.
We, we were sorry that you weren't here. Mr. Pitts has done a review of, of the rollback rate and what it's done. I've seen the things.
Oh, yeah.
It's over two-hundred-million dollars over several years of revenue that we've lost.
I can't tell you how I'm excited I'm about that. That's terrific news. So anyway, I hope we can find a way to use some of that to improve, improve salaries without, within the district, or throughout the district.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Forney?
Yeah, when we improve the salaries, I would like to see our steps put back in. That's all I'm going to say, for our employees.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham.
Just a comment that we need to continue to be mindful, board members, of how much our fund balance does affect these ratings. We need to continue to keep our fund balance strong and not dip into it as much as possible because this is the rates at which we borrow money to be able to build schools and other things. So we just need to be mindful that, that fund balance is a huge part of this rating. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Fields.
I'm sorry. I just want to commend the staff. We've been focusing on maintaining our rating and working on not having the millage rate rolled back for years. And so it's, it's just a blessing that we are finally seeing some positive things. And I want to commend Ms. Dodge as well. When she comes up, I'm sure she's going to reiterate what you just said, and that has been a long time coming. So, and it's a lot of people that's no longer with us that has impacted our finance department as well. So kudos to everyone that's had an impact in making sure that we've maintained and done what we need to do for our students and for our school district.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Fields. All right. Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. We have our next item, a job description for Senior Coordinator, Construction Services. Ms. Ted Reportius, Associate Superintendent of Human Resources.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Today I bring before you a Senior Coordinator, Construction Services position. This position is not new to the district. In fact, many of you know Mr. Rodney Turner. It's his previous position, so we're just amending the education experience and/or certification requirements for the position, essentially to include ten years of experience in school construction. And we are removing considerable experience and specifically inserting a number of years. We believe that this will be a benefit for our internal and external applicants. And it's no cost, no additional cost.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Miller?
So making it a generalized years and not get, and not making a general statement would widen the pool of qualified applicants?
Yes. So what happens is sometimes, particularly within construction services, they don't always have a degree, the bachelor's degree. And so we did, or, ten years of experience in school construction. And we removed specific experience in school construction. So you can have the bachelor's or the ten years, and then we removed just the standalone ten, or considerable instruction, experience, excuse me.
And ten years, you think is, is not, seems like a long time in construction, but...
It does, but for some, for someone at this level, we need about ten years of experience. We did consult with Mrs. Usher. We worked with her closely to make sure that this would be what she needed for the position.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions from Ms. Portius? All right. Thank you, Ms. Portius.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Wendy Dodge, she is obviously our Director of Legislative Affairs and Policy, and we have two items back-to-back for her. So Ms. Dodge, if you'll take us through both of those items, the policy update, this, excuse me, the session, the legislative update, and the policy updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
I'm hoping that when I open this up, it will appear on your screen. And now I'm hoping that someone will help me because it's not. Anyone? Oh.
Here comes Judd. Yep.
Is that all right?
Madam Chair, do we have a printout of this?
I did not receive one. No, no, ma'am. There was nothing, no attachment.
No.
Perhaps she has something she can give us.
I just wanted the whole thing to be up there.
Or someone can make copies.
Yeah, you're good.
Do you have a printout or something for us?
I'm sorry, I didn't. It was attached as, as part of the agenda, so I did not do a printout. I apologize.
We don't have a touch.
It's not attached.
We will take care of it.
It's always helpful when it's attached so we can print them ahead of time. Pardon?
Okay. Sorry about that. So today's presentation is the results of this year's legislative session. You might be disappointed based on your earlier comments because I don't have a lot in here about the budget because our staff has already given you such a nice update on the budget and the information that I sent out right after the end of session. So there's a little bit here on the statewide budget, but if you have questions, please, you know, let me know. I'm happy to have any of those discussions that you'd like to have. This slide is the statewide budget. As you can see, the unweighted FTE is about two-point-eight-six million students in the state, and then the weighted is three-point-one, and that's based on all the different weights that are, that are, you know, elementary, middle, high school, students with disabilities, ESOL, those types of things. The base student allocation is up slightly statewide. The teacher salary increase is at fifty-million dollars statewide. So that allows us to maintain the increases to teachers that we gave last year, and then through the same formula of eighty-twenty, eighty percent went to those, getting those steps up to forty-seven-five, and then the other twenty percent can be used for veteran teachers and others who aren't included in the definition of classroom teachers. So that's where those, that additional, our portion of the additional fifty-million dollars will be able to go. Mental health allocation is up twenty-million dollars statewide. The ESE Guaranteed Fund, unfortunately, is down twenty-seven-million dollars statewide. And then the compression and hold harmless formula, which we have benefited from, from the beginning, is down seventeen-million dollars. However, that's a result of there being, Miami Dade is no longer included in that DCD hold harmless part of that formula. And so the amount of money that Polk received from the compression portion of it actually went up about two-million dollars, even though the pot is smaller because there's no one, they're not in that hold harmless portion. That pot of money is, is there to do two different, two different things. Bring districts that are below the statewide average per student towards the statewide average, and then also hold harmless districts that have had an impact because of changes to the DCD. And so last year Miami Dade was in that hold harmless part and took up a big chunk of that money, and this year they're not in there. So it's less money, but more for us. Yes, ma'am?
May I?
Yes, I'm sorry.
What is our current DCD rate? What's the percent for Polk?
It is nine-six. I'm looking at, Jason. Close to point nine-seven. It's like nine-six-nine.
You could get me that exact value at some point in time. I'd appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I believe it was in the previous documents that I sent to you, but I will, I will certainly resend it to you.
Also, can you give us the compression amount difference?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And so class size reduction, I think it's also important to point out, has been reduced this year. And what they did was reduce the amount that you receive per student. So we used to get about twelve-hundred dollars a student for an elementary student for class size reduction because those are the smallest class sizes. They have to be eighteen. And they reduce that now to about nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars per student. And then there were also reductions at middle school and also at the high school level. Part of that is in response to changes that have been made over the years, allowing districts to use school-wide average in choice situations and in other situations. And, and part of that is just a reflection of policy choices they made this year in the budget. So that is why there's a over three-hundred-million-dollar decrease in the class size reduction statewide.
Excuse me, Ms. Dodge, if I could interrupt. The attachment is available now.
Thank you.
Just.
Refresh?
Ms. Winchester, the expert, said to refresh.
The guru.
The guru.
The guru. I always say that.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
The other Wendy. Thank you, good Wendy.
Yes.
I have a question, Ms. Dodge.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. The class size reduction, can, can you share with our studio audience what that really means at a school as far as staffing?
This is just a global.
Right.
Summary.
Because we're all choice schools now, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So that, you know, when we're making staffing decisions during the spring, those are reflected in the numbers that we receive, the allocations to each school. And we have historically had a reserve pot of money to allow for modifications as, at the beginning of the school year in terms of staffing. And that could certainly impact the amount of money available for that as well.
Thanks.
And then the last, and just statewide issue that I wanted to point out is this student reserve voucher pot of money. It's own four-hundred-and-sixty-four-million dollars. And that pot of money is there to protect districts from a proration. So we are growing, and we have, you know, I believe that our estimates are we should have about one-hundred-and-nine-thousand students next year. If we were to have one-hundred-and-ten-thousand students, we would be paid for those students. But this pot of money will not kick in unless that overall statewide number of three-point-one-six-three, unless we go over that statewide. So what the language says regarding this pot of money is between the number of students who show up statewide this year and the number of students who take the vouchers under, I'm going to get to the new voucher program, if that causes a proration to districts, then this pot of money would kick in. So it wouldn't necessarily, necessarily kick in if we're growing, the whole state would have to have more students for that pot of money to kick in. So also, if part, part of the budget this year, the legislature chose to, to allocate some of our federal funding. I'm sorry, I'm going to go back because I forgot to mention a couple of things. First of all, it's important to note that there are no school recognition dollars allocated this year, and that is a reflection of the fact that not, not all schools. Last year, the school recognition was vetoed because there was no testing. This year, school, there's testing, but schools will have an opportunity to choose, or the district will choose whether schools receive a grade or not. And the governor's position this year was to only allow school recognition to go to Title I schools based on there. That was his initial position at the beginning of the year, when it became clear that not all schools would be graded, then the school recognition, that policy just kind of went by the wayside. But I just think that it's important to note that those bonuses aren't available this year. And then that was the only thing that I missed on that one. Okay. So now we're into the federal funds. The SRT cares to, depending on what you call it, the legislature chose to take a portion of those fundings, funding and allocate it to the district in three different pots. The first pot is non-enrollment assistance, and that basically, what they do is in the education funding bill, which is HB fifty-one oh one, they define how they want us to use that money. And it says that we are to use it to locate unaccounted students and defines them as students who were either enrolled in twenty nineteen-twenty but didn't, weren't in one of the counts for the current school year, or who enrolled for the current school year and then didn't show up in one of the counts for the school year, and there's no documentation as to why. So for, and, and that's to reflect the fact that sometimes there were kindergartens, kindergartners who the parents decided to start them next year instead of this year. And so we have documentation of that. They're not accounted for. We know that they're going to be here next year. And so we have to put together a multi-agency work group in order to determine the well-being of those students that are unaccounted for. It has to include school personnel, law enforcement, the state attorney's office, DCF, DJJ, and Department of Health representatives. And then once a student is located, if the parent is the reason that they are not being educated, then we are required under this language to file a truancy petition and start that action. The second funding pot is for academic acceleration. And that also, the language is in HB fifty-one oh one, as to how we can use those funds. And again, this is our federal cares-to funding. And so it has to be used to remediate learning loss for K-12 students using pre-imposed assessments. You have to implement evidence-based interventions and instruction inside and outside the school day and year. You can use teacher training, you're supposed to use, excuse me, teachers trained in the use of multi-tiered supports, and provide information and assistance appearance on how they can support their student. And then we will be reporting to the Department of Education in February about the effectiveness of those interventions and the pre-imposed data, assessment data. And then the final pot of money is technology assistance. And that states that school districts shall use those funds for costs associated with educational technology. It can be hardware, software, and can also include assistive technology for students with disabilities. And then the final pot is just a lump sum pot of money that can be, that there's no instruction on how that will be used. And then there were also American Rescue Plan, which was the final federal money passed in March. And then there's a six-point-eight-million-dollar pot of money that says it's going to be released based on plans that the state and that we send to the state. And then there's a forty-six-million-dollar pot of money for homeless children and youth to provide wraparound services. And then another pot of, the final pot of money is one that we've discussed before, and that's the one-thousand-dollar bonuses from the state that will go to classroom teachers. And so that's just to clear, that's the language that authorizes that and says that that money will come and is directed by the Department of Education and not through the district. So HB fifty-one oh one, I talked about, has all the directions for those pots of money that, with the federal funding. And then it also impacts our compensation and salary schedules by saying, you know, if you haven't met the forty-seven-five base salary for your teachers, then you have, it basically says how, the kinds of adjustments that you can make up to your salary schedules if you haven't met that. And then it can't be less than seventy-five percent of the largest adjustment to this, to the grandfather's schedule after you have met it. We're not there yet. And then it talks about the highly, HE, teachers on the performance salary schedule have to be at least twenty-five percent greatest and the highest adjustment on any other salary schedule annually. And then any, no salary schedule can give an adjustment to an NI or an UNSAT employee. And then there were a couple of other changes in there. Right now, we're required to have three virtual, offer three virtual options, and that reduces it to one. And then it removes the requirement that we spend our SAIs, supplemental academic instruction money on the extra hour of reading for the schools that are in the lowest three-hundred. The requirement is still there. It, this is just moving, that requirement is also in the reading allocation money, so this is just saying you don't have to spend your SAI funding on that. Does that make sense? You're looking at me. Okay. And then it deletes the declining enrollment and virtual education contribution categoricals. So as you're looking at that bill, you'll see it renumbers all the paragraphs, and that's because they eliminate some of those categoricals. So that's all budget-related stuff. Before I move on, do we have budget-related questions, or do we want to talk about?
So, the reason I was looking at you, so it does not remove the requirement for the extra hour of reading. It simply says you don't have to use that pot of money to do it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Reynolds.
Thank you. I just want to clarify on the salary schedule and giving salary adjustments for NI or UNSAT. That's only the salary schedule, that wouldn't include if we did a cost of living increase or anything like that, it's just the schedule?
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
So, I'm going to move on to the substantive bills, they are not all on here, they're all on here, but the last, the last slide is really just a listing of things because there were just so many bills that passed this year. So, I tried to narrow this down to bills that I thought you'd be interested in. And then, if you have questions about other bills that you're interested in that are on that last slide, I'd be happy to answer them. HB 3 creates a new World's Reading Initiative, there's about $100 million tucked into the back of the budget to fund this initiative. We, it is for students in K-5 who are under Level 3 on their previous year ELA. And it requires us to partner with a nonprofit to provide those students with books directly to their home on a monthly basis. And we are also, as part of this bill, required to any student who is exhibiting a substantial reading deficiency, we're required to let them know about the program so we can get them in there even if there's not an ELA score. And so, right now, the, this initiative is funded through the state, but there is a mechanism in the bill similar to the tax credit voucher mechanism for funding so that it can go on after state funding isn't available, because right now, it's funded out of federal funding. HB 711 is student, 7D11, excuse me, is student literacy. That starts in the 22, 23 school year, not the upcoming school year. But it's going to require progress monitoring for grades VPK through 8. It creates the RACE program, which is statewide literacy supports, and there's going to be 20 regional literacy experts provided by FDE, FDOE around the state to help support that program. It revises the pathways for getting your, for teachers to get their reading endorsement and says that you can't graduate from a teacher prep program until you have that reading endorsement. And then, it says that we have to keep struggling readers informed of progress throughout the year and their parents as they're going through the school year. HB 5 is civic education. The US government course has to include a comparative discussion of political ideologies such as communism and totalitarianism. It requires DOE to develop the curriculum. And then, it creates a Portraits and Patriotism Act, which is an oral history and has to be based on personal stories from individuals, and then has to include first-person accounts of victims of other kinds of government from other countries in the world. SB 146 is civic literacy. It established, establishes this practicum beginning again in the 2022, 23 school year, so not the upcoming year, year, thank goodness. It outlines the criteria for the practicum. It allows that these, these unpaid hours can go towards Bright Futures volunteer hours, creates a citizen scholar program. And then, probably most importantly for students, if they complete this program, they can get six credit hours and be known as citizen scholars. SB 72 is the civil liability related to COVID, and this protects school districts, educational institutions, and other businesses in Florida from being sued because of things that happened during COVID, becoming sick or other things that have happened. And that has already been signed in law by the governor on April 29. And then, HB 131 is the educator conduct bill, this bill has been around for a few years and they finally passed it this year, and that means that we have to conduct a full and complete investigation of sexual misconduct by school employees. We have to have an affidavit of separation when it's regarding, when, when an employee separates because of misconduct. The DOE is going to have a disqualification list for our employees, private charter schools, everyone who has an employee who separates because of this type of behavior will go on the disqualification list. And then, it also requires that when an employee is arrested for an event, for an offense involving abuse or drugs, we have to notify parents. HB 529 is moments of silence in public schools. It requires the principal to require the teacher to set aside from 60 to 120 seconds of silence at the beginning of each school year. This is for, in a high school, this would be in homeroom class or at the beginning of the day. In elementary, middle school, it prohibits teachers from making suggestions as to what you should be thinking about while you're reflecting. And then, it requires the first period teachers to discuss, to encourage parents to discuss with their students what they should be reflecting on during this moment of silence. And then, HB 157 is first aid training in public schools. It, we are now required, it used to be encouraged, to provide basic first aid training in grades nine and 11. And then, the training has to be based on nationally recognized programs, and if you have AED equipment, then it also, that training has to include the use of the AED equipment. HB 1159 was my favorite bill this year because it has in there our legislative platform item of requiring the VAM data to be provided to the districts by July 31st every year. So, super good bill. It also has language in there about allowing parents to retain students for their K-5 students for this year only. It puts some parameters in there in terms of discussing it with the principal, offering other, you know, mid-year promotion and other things that can happen with a student if a parent is concerned about their student being promoted this year. But the language ultimately gives the parent for this year only the final control. Now, parents have to notify the district that this is what they're interested in doing by, I believe, June 30th. And then, it talks about teacher prep programs have to have curriculum identifying, identifying on how teachers can identify students who need mental health assistance and using technologies for distance learning. Mastery of general knowledge has to be demonstrated prior to graduation for candidate, you know, teacher candidates. The EPIs are going to be offering professional development for full and part-time career ed teachers. And then, demonstration of mastery of knowledge can now be, you can just, you can have a master's or higher degree to demonstrate mastery, mastery. And then, DOE is going to tell us what programs you have to have those degrees from in order for that to qualify. HB 149, also been around for a long time, this is students with disabilities in public schools, and that did pass this year. It prohibits school personnel from placing students in seclusion, but this does not include a timeout for behavior management that's intended to calm the student. It says that only authorized school personnel can retain a student and talks about under what situation that could happen. We, the districts have to now provide training to all school personnel authorized to use PBIS. And then, it has to be annual and include cardiopulmonary resuscitation, which is super hard to say. Each school district must publish procedures for the training in your policies and procedures, and then, if a student is restrained more than once, we have to develop critical incident plans, excuse me, crisis intervention plans for that student. And then, HB 419 was early learning and early grade success, most of this, again, happens in the future. It transfers immediately, almost, the Office of Early Learning from DCF to FDOE. But talks about beginning in the 2022, 2023 school year. There's no more kindergarten readiness rates and flickers. And they are going to start using program performance metrics that include a composite score and learning gains and standards for early literacy and math. FDOE is going to calculate the kindergarten rate for each private provider. And that is going to include learning gains and a value-added measure, which we've seen it's going to be very similar to what we're doing. We know what VAM is, so. And then, there's going to be coordinated screening and progress monitoring implemented the same year, and then, the data's going to be used to provide supports for students in VPK. Student safety. Our principals now have to make a reasonable attempt to notify the parents of a minor before they're removed in, in any situation that might include mental health situations. Our school safety officers need to go, undergo crisis intervention training now. When a principal contacts somebody on an emergency contact card, they're going to have to be more careful about the information they share if it's not the parent, and just make sure that they're just saying, I need the parent to contact me. And then, our policies are going to be able to provide accommodations for emergency drills that are happening at our ESE centers. And we're going to have to timely notify parents when certain acts or emergencies happen on school grounds. And then, beginning with the upcoming school year, we're going to have to print on our ID cards for the students, the crisis and suicide prevention hotline number. Okay. SB 1028 used to be a charter school bill. Now, it's an education bill. So, what I've done is divide this up into several slides, so I just have the general education provisions, and then I'll get into the charter school and the School of Hope stuff. So, it allows your committees now to meet either in person or using telephonic and video conferencing. It changes the definition of persistently low-performing schools so that it only counts the years when a school receives a grade. So, you know, last year, there were no grades, this year, a school may or may not have a grade, so those years won't be counted when they're discuss, when they're determining whether a school follow, meets that definition. Water safety information is going to have to go to all parents of students who are either new to the district, beginning not this year but next year. High-performing school districts will be able to offer two days of virtual instruction per year, and you have to have a plan and submit that to DOE. And then, your career centers are going to be reimbursed at the in-state tuition rate for the new dual enrollment scholarship program. It also creates the Fairness in Women's Sports Act, which designates that all teams have to either be determined to be a male, female, or co-ed team. Females are allowed to play on a team designated as male, but males are not allowed to play on a team designated as female. And this is established based on the student's birth certificate nearest their time of birth. And then, it allows for the school district to be sued if a student is deprived of athletic opportunity, harmed by the act, or is subject to adverse action for reporting a violation. Universities, now we're into the charter school provisions. Universities can now sponsor charter school and serve districts, students from multiple districts if the DOE authorizes it for them. State colleges can sponsor charter schools and serve students in any county in their regional service area. They can offer industry certifications to charter students, and if we, if you have a, an existing charter school that we are sponsoring, they have to wait until their contract is up before they could go to a college and ask for them to be their sponsor. DOE is going to develop a sponsor accountability framework, and that's probably going to be based on the NEXA standards that most of the districts in the state already follow. It removes the application deadlines and allows charter schools to open at any time. So, right now, there's like a certain window when you guys see a lot of charter applications and interviews and those type of things, and those deadlines have been removed from statute, so that now can happen year-round as part of, as, as part of the board's review.
Beginning when, immediately?
July 1st.
Okay, thank you.
This bill has already been signed.
Okay.
It was signed last week.
Okay, thank you.
So, it modifies the racial and ethnic balances that charters have to maintain. It used to be they had to look like schools that looked like them, and now, they just have to look like schools that are near them, and they're, that could be a school in another district if they're on a county line. And the same thing for, if, if they're appealing a double F situation, they used to compare the schools to like schools, and now it's nearby schools. They can replicate themselves, they can have two replication applications going at any one time, that it used to just be one if you're a high-performing charter school, and they can offer career professional academies now. An ESE center, charter ESE center can replicate itself under the high-performing statute if they have two consecutive years of maintaining rating. And then, the last part of this bill are Schools of Hope provisions, and we do have Schools of Hope coming, so I thought this might be of interest to you. It allows a nonprofit entity to operate more than one, who operates more than one School of Hope to be designated as their own LEA by the state. Report FDE directly to the state instead of going through the district in which they're located. Provide the district with quarterly financials that reflect the schools of their district, and then their annual financials would operate, would reflect all of the schools they're operating statewide. They can use their assets for any school that they operate within the district, they don't have to limit it to each school, and then file fingerprints with anyone authorized to take them in the state. And then, FDOE is going to provide the district with a list of surplus facilities by January 1st annually, and we'll have 30 days to make sure that that list is correct before they publish it as facilities that might be available for a School of Hope. And then, they are now authorized to receive charter capital outlay funds, and that is important to us because if at any time the state doesn't fully fund the charter school capital outlay fund, I'm not sure if you remember or not, but several years ago, they passed a law that says if they don't fully fund it, then we have to start sharing our LCI dollars with charter schools. So, now that the Schools of Hope are in that fund too, that puts more pressure, that's more money the state has to come up with, and if at any time they don't come up with that money, then we have to start sharing our local capital outlay millage. And then, the last, I think, bill is HB 7045, which was the school of choice bill. This basically expands the family empowerment scholarship so that a family for earning about $100,000 is eligible. There's no longer a prior public school year requirement in order to participate in the scholarship program, so you can go right into a scholarship, you know, in kindergarten. It's going to be funded through the FEFP, and it has increased from being 95% of the average, you know, of the, of the total average per student that the district gets to 100%. And then, they will serve both low-income and students with unique abilities, so what they've done is repeal the McKay program. They repeal the Gardner program immediately, I believe, and the McKay program in a year. And then, the students with the unique abilities will be funded out of a, an ESA, an education savings account, and the, they specify in that what they can spend that type of mon, what they can spend that voucher money on. In terms of what the district has to do under this program, we have to notify all students who receive free or reduced-priced meals of their eligibility in January, and that used to be, I believe, be April, so they've moved up that deadline. We now only have 30 days to develop an IEP matrix of services for a parent who requests, who requests it under either, under, it's now the Family Empowerment Scholarship Program now. So, because that's a hard date, we have to put off some of the things we're other doing in terms of IEP development and make sure we meet those deadlines. And then, we have to notify parents of a student of all choice options within 10 days after an IEP meeting. And then, we have to allow a parent to enroll a student and transport them in adjacent districts, if that's how they would like to use their scholarship.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Wendy, the first four bullets, who, who on our district staff has to monitor all that? And, like, how are they going to?
I believe that scholarships are handled through our Acceleration and Innovation Department, and they have been handling opportunity scholarships and McCay's.
Right, but that's like a huge, new lift. Right, but that's like a huge new lift for them.
It definitely is.
Ms. Miller?
I have a couple of questions on this, and just for subject's sake, my son was on the Gardner. What the issue we're going to have, and this might be a Dr. Lux question, we're already out of compliance in a lot of areas trying to maintain IEPs that we have to do within 60 days. Having to develop IEPs for children who do not attend our schools and develop a matrix for them within 30 days, I'm not sure, one, that the child will receive, if you're not a student in our schools, but we're supposed to develop this for you, to create the matrix, you're creating that based on services, but if we've never served you. I'm curious to what that will look like for staff who are already trying to keep up with IEP requirements from COVID delay.
It'll be a mess.
That's what I thought, okay.
One of the things, and Mr. Bridges, you may have more recent information that has been tossed around, is whether or not this rule supersedes federal IDA requirements, which currently give us 60 days to develop or to evaluate a student upon parent request if the evaluation is agreed to. A parent can request an evaluation of a student. The school then has 30 calendar days to respond to that request, either agreeing they will conduct the evaluation or will not. If they decide that they will not, then we provide reasoning why. Once the evaluation consent form is signed by the parent, the school district is then on the clock for 60 days when school is in session. So it does not include summertime. It does not include spring break, winter break, and after a certain number of absences, those are counted as part of that timeline as well. We already have difficulty meeting that 60-day timeline with the number of school psychologists and social workers and other evaluators that we have. A possible effect of this bill is if they're going to require that we develop IEPs upon demand, is that we would be in a situation where we would have to ignore federal guidance. That is very clearly established on whether or not a student can qualify for an IEP. My biggest concern is that there is no indication that the student will be considered for an IEP within 30 days. It says they will have an IEP within 30 days. There is a process to determine if a student is eligible to have an IEP. And that is a very well-defined process that requires multi-tiered systems of support and a comprehensive evaluation that includes more than one source of information.
I want you to know that that was shared in testimony in committee multiple times. It is going to be very difficult, and we can be in violation federally with Office of Civil Rights because we're not meeting the needs of the students that we already have here. My other concern is from someone who's in the scholarship and watching who takes part of the scholarship, a lot of it is what I consider very high functioning students. So to require an IEP, there are parameters. So is it our staff that's going to have to have the conversations with the parents? And do they go to their zone school? If I'm a homeschool parent or I'm a new parent, where would I go to get this IEP for a child you've never met?
Generally speaking, you would go to the school that you are zoned for based on whether it's elementary, middle, or high. There is some, if it's out of county, that provides a little bit of an area where the counties will have to decide who would do the evaluation. However, the biggest concern that I have is, does this supersede federal law? And I know Mr. Bridges has been involved with multiple districts on this. I don't see how we can meet the guidelines of IDEA and do a thorough and comprehensive evaluation on students that we have never met, who are not required to have ever been in our school district, and who we have absolutely no information on.
Don't go anywhere, because I have a question on another piece, but...
I'm yours as long as you need me, Ms. Miller.
But Wendy, along with this, and I helped the whole creation of Gardner was positive, to help the most significant students. It's varied, we have variations of this now. My question is, this is also, is this the legislation that also allows if your child is on the Gardner Scholarship in a private setting, now their siblings without disabilities are offered the scholarship? So now the private schools, if your child is going to a private school, my son is homeschooled. If that child was going to a private school, they can market services and say, "Hey, do you have any siblings?" And they would qualify under this legislation.
Yes, and I tried to limit this to one slide. It was a huge bill. But that is part of, part of the eligibility requirements are that if you have someone who's on a family empowerment scholarship, then all their siblings are also become eligible.
Did this end the McKay between public schools? It ended McKay, but we have, the McKay would apply if a child lived in a certain area of our district, but the needs would be best met at a school that was not in their zone. In the past, we McKay'd them to that public school. That no longer exists.
They did, that was part of the original proposal, but in the end, they did not eliminate that option.
So that is still available to McKay within your district out of your zone?
Well, it's not going to be called McKay anymore, but that option is available, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it's not, what do we call that?
Family empowerment scholarship for students with unique abilities.
Okay, but the option of going to a school that's not your zone to meet the needs of your child is still available?
Yes, ma'am.
It's just going to be referred to something else. And this will meet the needs of a lot of children, this is not, but it was just, the bill was so packed that it was very difficult to understand the requirements, especially for things like that IEP.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? Okay.
I have one, I wanted to back up, I apologize. I had one on 149 on the restraints, that's why Dr. Lux is still here. And also House Bill 173, just for people, but House Bill 149, we have seclusion cells in Polk County, what will happen to those?
They'll be repurposed, probably as closets.
Okay, so the padded cells are no longer...
They only exist, to my knowledge, in one or two locations, but they are there. They're not, we had, I don't have it in front of me, but we have significant data from the past two school years showing a significant decrease in the number of seclusions that were used. What we'll have to look into is, are those areas of the schools that have them able to be used for timeout versus seclusion? The definition of seclusion is very specific, and that is no longer allowed as of July 1. We had very few students secluded. In recent data, I haven't been with Polk County for years and years to know what it looked like before.
And I know a lot of schools use those for more sensory input, and the whole metal door closing with the view from the window is no longer being...
Correct. My understanding of seclusion is if the student chooses to use a sensory room, even if that does have pads on the walls as a tool to help them maintain appropriate behavior and the door is left open, whereas otherwise not held shut, then it doesn't fall under the definition of seclusion. And we do have some students who, particularly in our center schools, who request that. They like that option of being in a place by themselves that's quiet, that's secure, and that would be, you know, I believe is the intent under the stipulation to use that as a timeout so that the student can get in control of themselves. But pushing, terrible use of words, putting a student in those rooms for any reason other than a student initiated timeout, is, my understanding, is not going to be allowed.
And they have the necessary materials to create sensory settings if desired for the schools?
I can speak for our center schools, they do, each of our center schools has a sensory classroom. I'd like to put more stuff in there, but they do, they have things like gymnastics mats, they have swings, they have bubble tubes and different things like that, and sensory engaging things that tend to be very popular with the students.
I got to go in Gino Dells. But a lot of that was donated.
Yes.
We didn't buy it.
No, a lot of it has been donated, and with the limitations that we have under IDEA, which we talked about before, it's very difficult to find funding to use for sensory integration, though. And there is questionable research on whether or not it's effective. I wrote my dissertation on that. However, if a kid likes it and it works for that kid, then I think we use it.
That bill also refers to restraints. Does it give what type of restraints? I know that only, it's supposed to be used at last resort. Can you talk about the restraints? Do we use prone restraints in Polk County?
To my knowledge, no.
Would you, we use mechanical restraints in Polk County?
Only if indicated in a, specifically in a child's plan of care. Most of them would be like, I believe they're called Riften chairs.
Right.
And those are for students that are at risk of falling out of a wheelchair or otherwise at risk of harming themselves without having some type of restraint in place to prevent that from happening, but they're not used as a disciplinary measure. They can be used in the event that a student is exhibiting behavior that is a danger to themselves or to others, and only for the short period of time that's necessary until the student no longer poses a danger. If you look, in the bill, it does specify that we have to document behavioral interventions. We have to document the staff member who applied the restraint, has been suitably trained in that, that they have their last training, and specifies that the restraint must stop as soon as the student is no longer posing an act of danger to themselves or others. So there's copious amounts of reporting required for this. So with this bill passing, one of my jobs is now going to be to very closely look at our reporting methodologies and make appropriate changes for them.
Thanks. My last question is, House Bill 173, the IEP requirements, is that in reference to when transition services or transition? We'll start, that's on your last slide, you don't have it. It's okay, and you can send that to me. I think I recall it being, IEP 173 would require, something would transition earlier.
Yes, it was about transitioning into post-secondary. I believe it has to start in sixth grade instead of eighth grade.
That's a huge shift in our practice.
Right. And that will be part of professional development?
Seventh grade.
Seventh grade. Yeah, currently it's in eighth.
Right, thank you.
Ms. Reynolds, and then Ms. Fields?
Thank you. I have two questions. The first one's on HB 1159. With the GKE being a master's or higher degree allowed in lieu of the GKE by an approved institution, once we get that list, will it be retroactive of, for example, if UF's master's program is on that list, that someone who has a master's from UF but may have not passed the GKE yet, that they would be allowed to use that and replace, or is it just moving forward?
I'm going to say yes, but refer you to Mrs. Porteous, because this has not been signed into law yet. It has an effective date of July 1st, but I don't believe that department is going to start putting out those lists until it's in law.
Okay, thank you. The second one is on SB 1028, the charter school section. You mentioned the year, being able to accept charter applications year-round. Is that something that this will require us to do or allow us to do?
Require us to do.
And it'll be like 60 days from whenever we receive it, that we have to have it viewed?
Yes, ma'am. The timelines were not changed, it was just the February 1 application date that was removed, and it specifically says that applications can be made year-round.
There's no longer a cycle. It's now any time, and that means that what was, we were able to efficiently do it by having a charter review committee that met at a particular time. Now that can be required to happen at any time triggered by the submission of the application. They also put in a provision that allows for attorney fees if a charter is denied and they successfully appeal, and that is not reciprocal. It doesn't apply if the district is successful, but if they are denied, they appeal and they're successful, they now will have the opportunity to recover their attorney fees.
I guess a follow-up to that would be, it says that they can have two replications at the same time. Does it separate how often they can have? So can they have two in August and then have another two in December, or does it have to be two a year?
It's two per year. And what it says is, in order for them to have another one in the cycle, they either have to withdraw one that they have going now, or it has to have opened.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Fields, and then Ms. Forty.
I wanted to know, this is a lot to chew on today. And who is the gatekeeper? Who ensures that whatever these bills require, that we are in compliance? That's my first question. And then my second question, not really a question, but a request, if you can direct us to the links for some of these bills that you didn't explain, like the impact fees, House Bill 337, and the House Bill 7033 Task Force on Closing the Achievement Gap for Boys. So can you answer those, please?
Yes, ma'am. In the end of session summary that I sent to each of you, that did include links to all the bills, and where appropriate, like if it was a big bill, like the voucher bill, I tried to do a copy of the staff analysis as well, so that there was additional information in there. But if there's anything specific that you want, please reach out to me, and I'm happy to send links, or I can just send you a PDF or whatever you need to look at.
Okay, and what about the gatekeeper? Who's the gatekeeper?
That's not...
Oh, is there a gatekeeper?
I mean, you know, it's ultimately the board and the superintendent's responsibility, but I'm not quite sure how to answer that question.
That's fine, but there's a lot to do. And I'm just wanting to know, so we can have that conversation later.
So, just also, this information has been shared with executive staff, including links to the bills and staff analysis, and I try to be, you know, available to staff for questions, send out anything anybody needs. And Foil does a lot of training, the state agencies have done a lot, have been doing training on the bills that have passed to make sure that everybody knows what their requirements are and what has changed. Thank you.
Mrs. Fields, if I might, in regard to your question about who is the gatekeeper, one of the reasons that we contract with Neola is for the purpose, they're in the business of maintaining currency on all the compliance changes. So we will be seeing, there are a bunch of these bills that will require rulemaking or changes to existing rules. You will be seeing new policy recommendations coming in, probably in a steady stream over the next few months, as we attempt to get ahead of those requirements and those changes.
Thank you, I look forward to that, I'm very excited about that.
Thank you.
But you're gonna love the next item, then.
Thank you.
All right, yes. Ms. Forty, did you still have your question?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up with Mr. Bridges. The attorney fee piece, the appeal process?
Yes, ma'am.
Who does that get paid to?
That gets paid to the applicant.
Right, and so...
To pay, in other words...
And the appeals is the DOE, correct?
I'm sorry, yes. Yes, this is always, I don't think it would offend anyone for me to acknowledge that this has always been a little bit of a stacked deck. You know, it's more of, the appeals process is, has a very large political component as well as legal component. So if the district denies an application and the applicant appeals, the Department of Education is the ultimate decision-maker, and if they decide, oh, we're going to go ahead and prove it, and you can fix those inadequacies in contract negotiation, at that point, they'll submit a bill for the attorney's fees that they had to prepare their appeal, and the school boards will be ordered to pay those. The same thing, of course, is not true if they appeal and are unsuccessful.
I'd just like to add that there were kind of, there were several sections within the bill that dealt with attorney fees, at DOE hearings, at terminations, and then also with appeals. And in the other sections, I'm not familiar with what, in the other sections, it's whoever prevails has their attorney fees reimbursed.
Yes, and there is also a change in closure of charter schools. School boards will no longer be able to just step in and close a school for health and safety reasons. It will now be required that school districts go into court and obtain an injunction from a circuit judge in order to do that.
Okay, excuse me, before you continue, Ms. Dodge. Madam Chair, as a matter of just being just thoughtful about our time, we've got three more items. Would you mind if we skip break today, move forward? We do have the disciplinarian in the executive session.
Sounds great.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Dodge?
Okay, so the last slide here is just other bills that passed. And if you have any questions or would like any information about those bills, we only had a set amount of time today, so I just wanted to make them available to you as things that passed and that will impact the district, but I did not summarize them as part of the presentation.
Any update on FRS, the rate?
The rates did increase slightly, I believe the impact to the district was about nine million dollars, it was 134 million statewide, we're about three and a half percent of the state, so...
It increased by nine million?
But they were, compared to last year's increases, they were slight, you remember last year, we had like a four hundred million dollar...
Yes, I remember, I'm just curious how much we paid them.
And that was in SB 7018, which was on that last slide. Am I okay to move forward with the policy updates?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Lutz.
So the policy update items... Aha, okay, so, at the last work session, we discussed the naming of school facilities and commemoration and memorials policy, and we discussed combining them into one policy, and then deleting the, which is currently the naming of school facilities policy, which was 72501, and so what we've done is taken that language, combined it so that the first part of the policy is about naming school facilities, and the second part of the policy is about if a department or a principal would like to name a building or something on their campus, we've tried to put some similar but not overly burdensome processes in so that the board knows what a principal or a department had went through, and that there is support for the changes that there's, or the naming that they're trying to do, and they would just have to demonstrate that they had school and community input prior to doing a naming on their campus, or if it was a department head that wanted to name a building that was associated with their department.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Ms. Hill, and thank you for this, I want to thank Ms. Dodge for this and for the board for following through on this, this was my initiative originally. We appeared to have two policies that were conflicting or overlapping at least, so thanks for doing this, and I, you know, I want to echo what Ms. Reynolds said previously in that, one of the problems with this is if you, if we, if we name a building, a facility after someone, and later, for whatever reason, heaven forbid, something goes wrong, and that is less than appropriate for our community, removing that name can be quite messy, I mean, if you can imagine, you can have two community groups who are, you know, not in agreement about removing a name, so better to vet it carefully upfront than to have to go through that, I think, so thank you for doing this, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, I just, and I don't think that I have the support of the majority of the board, but I am still very much against allowing for those that are still with us, I think that we should be naming our buildings and things in memorial, but that's my opinion, and I don't know that I have a ton of support, but I just wanted to go on the record with that.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Okay, Mr. Wilson?
Well, I support that, I know I'm just one additional board member, but I support that as well, I think that it should be done in memorial also.
Ms. Cunningham?
I feel that oftentimes, having been on the board for a while, that if you can recognize someone for their dedication and years of service to a particular school or district office or whatever, I just think it means so much more, I can remember as through the years have gone by, and I have another request in my area coming up, hopefully to us next month, when that person who's dedicated their life to Polk County Public Schools is able to come here and be presented with this honor along with their family, to me it means, in my opinion, it means so much more than waiting for someone who has passed, so I would like, I really do, that's just personal, we're different, we'll vote on it and move forward, but I just think there's a lot to be said about that, so I would like to keep it to where it could be either way, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham, Ms. Fields?
I've already made my comments at the last meeting, I believe, give me my flowers while I may smell them, because when I am dead, I cannot do that, and I agree with the comments that Ms. Cunningham just made, but I'm not gonna reiterate what I already said, it's on record.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, Ms. Dodge?
So the remaining updates were those recommended by Neola, there are four bylaw changes that are just clarifications regarding meetings, agendas, executive session and work session, and then there's an information management policy where they basically have recommended, it's a lot of lowercase to uppercase and uppercase to lowercase type of stuff, but they do add some definitions in there as to what would, under what situation we would do a litigation hold of information. Were there any other questions about the additional policies and bylaws?
Ms. Miller?
The one on work, the one I'm looking at on work sessions, their publicly noticed meetings may be called by the chair of the school board, the superintendent, or a majority of the board, is there still somewhere in our policies and procedures for emergency work sessions, or, it seems like we're taking out can be called by others?
We have a separate policy that deals with emergency meetings and, a separate bylaw, actually, because the bylaws apply to the board, and so that information is included in that separate bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, Ms. Dr. Allen, sorry.
Thank you, Deputy, I think that's a great question, it brings up, because I'm familiar with that emergency and special meeting policy, just looking at it recently, and, you know, and I put a point of clarification during our last meeting that I did send an email specifically wanting to initiate, so with, if one of us board members were to send an email to superintendent in regards to wanting a special meeting or a work session based on the little language here, how do we know if we get to that point of a majority of the board?
That is a tricky part of that statute, and it is possible if a, if a majority of the board contact the superintendent independently and say, we need to have a special meeting, then I think the superintendent has information sufficient to call a special meeting. Typically, this means you would only have a major, you would only have knowledge of a majority of the school board if the request was made at a meeting, so for instance, if we were sitting here and you said, Mr. Superintendent, I think we need to have an emergency meeting next Monday to discuss this, and three other members of the board piled on, you've just met the requirement. Now, I don't think there's necessarily a sunshine violation if, if board members independently assess that there is a need for a special meeting and communicate that to the superintendent, but, but you can't, there's not a provision under Florida's law for the superintendent to contact board members individually and say, should we have a special meeting? That violates the sunshine law all by itself, so the superintendent can't call up and say, I know we've got this issue coming up, would you like to have a special meeting? If, on the other hand, board members have communicated individually to the superintendent spontaneously without being requested, we need to have a special meeting, superintendent gets the message, you know what, we may need to have a special meeting, superintendent can call that special meeting, either on superintendent's own authority, or, you know what, I've been contacted by four school board members who all think we ought to have a special meeting on this, I haven't, I haven't brokered a conversation with other school board members in violation of the sunshine, but I'm aware that a majority of the board would like to have an emergency meeting, the superintendent can call that meeting. But yeah, the way the statute is set up, it really is aimed at those situations where the board has, is in a meeting, is in public, and says, I would like to have another emergency meeting. It's, it is perhaps more, a more acute issue in places like Polk County where you only have one meeting scheduled per month to do, to take action on items. You know, in many, in many instances, agencies meet weekly or bi-weekly, and it's not as urgent as a requirement, but the other side to that is you still have two work sessions a month, and that gives you the opportunity at that time to indicate to the superintendent and to the board, you know what, we really ought to have an emergency meeting about this. It is, it's, the statute is designed to be difficult to have conversations in private of any kind.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
It does, it seems like the language is specifically related to more of the oral situation, so it's not really addressing electronic communication in some way, if, for us board members, if, if we felt the necessity to communicate the need for a special meeting or emergency meeting, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dodge, any other questions for Ms. Dodge?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, Ms. Usher, come up for item six, proposed points in a high school site, thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I really do need your help on this, and your input on this school site. We're looking for a high school in the Pointziana area, because we do have rapid growth in, as you all know, in that area, thirteen hundred students from the Pointziana area are being bused to Haines City, and growth continues. We're opening Davenport High School in August 21, we did the boundary changes, and these are enrollment with the new high school. You notice Haines City is still at ninety-six percent, and that does include the twenty-three portables on site in that utilization. Again, this is just showing you all the development in that area, Davenport High School, the relief to Ridge and Haines, and both schools will soon be full again. Residential development, I, these numbers, they don't break it out per area, but this shows between sixteen, it's about sixteen hundred to two thousand students, high school students within this timeframe, it's not specific to the Pointziana area, but a lot is, the most of it is happening in the north area. Around Pointziana, we have like five hundred development that will occur this year, and based on our student multiplier, that will be at least a hundred students in that area additional. This property was brought to us, it's ideally located in the Pointziana area, to provide enrollment relief to Haines City High and to accommodate all the growth. This is Lake Hatchinahaw, and this is just west of it. The property is really challenging, it is eighty-five acres, look at the configuration, we have Hemlock Road, Dogwood, and down here we have Bayberry, we have Laurel Elementary and Horizon and different schools up in this area, but we don't have any high school in that area. The challenge is access, as I mentioned, there is just, let me see if I have another one here, this is like three hundred and sixty frontage here, and here it's like six hundred, so, and with high school, we try to separate the buses from the parents, so it will be difficult, maybe we'll just have to put a route, an access here for buses and one here for residential, and we really would have to design this site, because I don't think any prototype would fit on this site based on its configuration. The other thing is, concern is, this area here is flood zone A, and even though we can build in the area, we have to, there's mandatory insurance, flood insurance that we would have to carry, but because it's eighty-five acres, we have like sixty-seven buildable acres in here for the high school. We talked to transportation about the site, and they think it's ideally located to provide enrollment relief to Haines City High School and accommodate the growth, they think they'll decrease the amount of time the students have to stay on the bus, they think it's a good location. This, we looked at the vacant parcels in the area, you notice we have a lot of wetlands with all the, and FEMA high hazard area, so there's another, this is the site I'm talking about right now, there's also one other site in this area, and our outside attorney is working with the owner, it would be a better site, better configuration if we could get it, but we haven't heard back from that owner as yet. In five years of Pointziana High School, we would still have to be building for a new high school, because again, right away, it will be filled again with all the development. In this area here, we have over nine thousand units, these units will equate to how many? Like fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred new high school students, based on our multiplier. And that's it, so those are the challenges I have, it's a good location, I have flood zone issues, access issues, it's great for enrollment relief, it's great to accommodate the growth, it will, might cost us a little bit more to develop because of the roadway improvements and the mitigation for the flood zone, but if we can't find any other site, and we're looking at the other site that would be much better, the configuration, the shape, if we can't get that, based on your directive, I might have to bring this back to the board for approval. They're asking seven to five thousand an acre, we have not done the appraisal as yet because I didn't want to spend that money without getting direction from the board. If we buy the entire acres, acre will be like six point three million dollars that we would use impact fee to purchase. Thank you.
Ms. Cunningham, then Mr. Wilson?
When will you hear back from the second site?
I got a call from the, our attorney, and since last week, he has been trying to reach them, and they have not responded, so I am not certain.
Not certain.
But certainly, that is the better site, I don't know if they agreed to sell it, what the cost would be.
Okay.
But it is much better of configuration and not the wetlands.
So the site that you've shown us, which is kind of in a C, it, that's the seventy-five K per acre?
That's correct.
Correct, so the other one you don't even have a cost with?
I don't know what the price would be.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Wilson?
On the property off of Dogwood, is that, is that near Marigold, is that?
That's correct, it is, it is, it was once an old developmental regional impact, I think it traverses both county, and so now they're selling it off and developing it.
So that would cover Pointziana as well as Hatchinahaw?
Right, that's correct, that area, that's correct, Mr. Wilson.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fortney, and then Ms. Miller?
Yeah, Ms. Usher, that whole thing, it just kind of, when I read over this, when you sent it earlier, it appeared to be an odd shape, and I was wondering how you would deal with that, and then of course I saw the flood area, how much does that flood insurance run a year?
I know currently, we do have some schools in flood zone A, and I know risk management is carrying on mandatory flood insurance, but Mrs. Fortney, I don't know what's the amount.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't know how much they pay for, but it will be mandatory, however, if we can really design the site and not use a prototype, it's very possible that we can avoid that ten acres with any building, we can maybe use it as access, maybe we can use the flood zone as a lake frontage or some amenity, and just build on the six to seven acres.
Yeah, science labs, yeah, I get that, but Haines City is definitely in need of help, yeah.
Right, it is.
Ms. Miller, you were next, and then Ms. Reynolds?
I just have a question, we do see the numbers on the growth there, we've had a couple of charter schools come in that will open in that area, do you think that's going to alleviate any of the growth? What is the timeframe, I guess I'm asking, that you think this is an urgent matter to get the school up?
Well, it takes about three years to build a high school, so that's why, and we do need, we do need the school. I know there are charter schools, I don't know if they're at the high school level or they're more K8, I'm not certain, but again, I always say that, that the charter school helps us in relief, but we do not know how long, we don't have any control over how long they'll be in business, and if the students come back to us, we have to accommodate them.
And also, I would like to give that second property a little more time to respond.
Okay.
There's a lot, a lot of that area are vacant owners, so I'm not sure if that person's local that you're trying to connect with.
It is local, but we don't have a lot of vacant land because we have the, not just the flood zone, but we have the wetlands, and so if you look at that map, it didn't have a whole lot, so...
I mean, the owners aren't here, the owners are usually in that area of the county, they're not from Polk, usually not from Polk County, my real estate dealings, I've had to contact people in England about property.
Right.
So I would like to give them a little more time...
Certainly.
...to respond to that, because I do like that second site better.
Okay, thank you, we'll do that, thank you.
You did indicate that you were looking from some direction for us, so, you know, I'm, I would have to agree with Ms. Miller, but I think we should put a timeframe on it, because I know we need to move forward, and forward pretty quickly, so my thought was if you don't reach them in, what amount of time do y'all think would be favorable? be favorable? And if not, we need to proceed with the other site because we may end up without a facility to build. So what do y'all think is a reasonable, you've already waited, did you say two weeks or?
Just a week.
Just a week. What do y'all feel is reasonable?
I think a couple of weeks and tell them that, you know, that if the work has restricted your timeframe to a couple more weeks, maybe that will help them make it.
Ms. Reynolds?
I know you said three years to build a school. What is our goal for opening this new school site? Is it as soon as possible? Do we have, we want it to be open by twenty-five, twenty-six?
I would like it to open before then.
Okay.
So.
So it's as soon as possible is what it sounds like. Okay. And looking at the map too, I know we've talked a lot about redistricting specifically for the northeast. I'm hopeful that we'll be looking at a little bit further southwest where Winter Haven is. This is the first time I think I've really looked at the old Lake Wales area, right where the scenic highway property would be.
Uh huh, uh huh.
That all of that area is going past Lake Region to be zoned to Winter Haven. That's super over capacity, but I'd love for us to look at that as well as we're looking at this.
I'll bring back to you all the updated projections and the capital plan in a couple of months.
Perfect.
And what schools we have planned in the county.
Thank you.
Ms. Fields, did you?
I agree with Ms. Miller. I think that we need to slow it down. I know that there's an urgency, but we need to look at all the avenues and the financial impact and everything and then make a recommendation on that and give you some guidance. I know that finding the right property is important. I know that when you find something, it can easily go away very quickly. But again, I think that we need to do diligence and make sure that we make the best financial decision for our school district.
Certainly.
Ms. Cunningham, did you have anything? Oh, I'm sorry, I did not see you.
Dr. Allen, go ahead. That thought just, you know, circling the mind there for a moment. So maybe just a point of transparency, typically how and who brings forward the property that we're considering? And then at this point, I've only heard that there's only two properties that we're looking at?
That's correct, Dr. Allen. We don't go out to any realtor or anything like that. We wait, they know, and they bring the property to us. If we see something we like, we don't like to negotiate as school district staff, so we would use our outside attorney to talk to them about purchasing the site. And so that's how we usually get it. Or if it's through development review and there's a big residential development, sometimes we work with the developer that they would, we would purchase it for them or they, we would get it in lieu of impact fees.
Okay. And then the cost per acre is consistent even if a portion of the property is unused? For this one in particular?
Usually that because that is, I mean, Ms. Miller knows it still, we would average that out in the cost.
Yep.
So it would be like they would take in the wetlands and give us the cost based on entire property. They would not split it out, the uplands this and the wetlands this.
Yep.
And we'd have two appraisals of that property?
We haven't done it yet. I'm sorry.
But that's, I mean, you're going to, you're going to pay based on what an appraisal says, not what based on they're asking for per acre.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Right, Mrs. Miller?
Thank you.
That is correct.
So, Madam Chair, did you want to have a consensus for guidance on that or?
Probably because I think there's a timeframe here. So what, what's the consensus to give staff is what I'm saying.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'll make a recommendation based off the conversation we've heard so far. Two board members, at least two board members have expressed an interest in extending the timeline for a response by at least two weeks. I would recommend that we, if the board approves, that we give them until the twenty-fifth because again, urgency is also an issue we have to address in order for us to go out for appraisal, in order for us to begin the process for planning, mitigation, working with municipalities, there's a lot, there's a great deal to this. It's why it takes three years to build a school. And so I would like to give the staff the opportunity to move forward. So I think that notifying them that they have until close of business on the twenty-fifth of this month would be appropriate. It allows our team to move forward and then by July twenty-seventh, you'll get a subsequent update as well. But if the, if the second property does provide a response, we'll be sure to update the board and you'll expect to hear an update by July twenty-seventh as well. If that's amenable to the board, that would be my recommendation at this time.
We have consent.
I agree.
Ms. Usher, okay with you?
Yes, that's fine. I have to say yes.
Good answer, Ms. Usher.
I have to say yes.
Well, her contract was already renewed. She didn't have to.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for bringing that forward.
Okay. Madam Chair, the next two items are items that were of concern for the board members and we'd like to bring up Ms. Jenkins and Ms. Dodge for context, to provide any additional context. So we'd like to start with the dollar amounts for consent items. Ms. Jenkins, if you'd like to share some context in regards to that?
Mrs. Dodge has also done some research on that.
All right, thank you.
We spoke earlier.
In terms of the consent items, consent agenda, we do have a section in our agenda's bylaw where we talk about a board member can remove anything. And so if you wanted to put any sort of threshold, that would be the place in the bylaw to put the language if that's what the consensus of the board is.
Yes. Mr. Wilson, I think this was one of your requests to put it a work session, so please go ahead.
And I mean, the real issue is transparency.
So I think I had requested five hundred thousand dollars. So on today's agenda, we've got several items that exceed that and we've got four items that exceed a million dollars. And I think that, you know, I think it's important that the superintendent has some flexibility. So I'm not sure that a policy is warranted necessarily, but even if, for example, if we have items that are a million dollars on the, in the consent agenda, we still, I think, should have someone explain that, just come forward and talk about it and say why it's there. And if it's important that, you know, for the superintendent to have it on the consent agenda for whatever reason, that's okay. But for, I would say at least a million dollars. I mean, if it's a million dollars or over, we really should have someone come and speak to the general public about what the item is and generally why it's on the agenda. For example, many of these have to do with facilities, right? So they're going to be high dollar value items. So if we have someone come and say, hey, we're constructing a new building, just something as simple as that, and this is typical, is, you know, within our normal limits, I think that meets my concerns, but just, we have items that are a million dollars, five million dollars, thirty-five billion dollars on the consent agenda, it may seem like we're not being as transparent as perhaps we should be. So that's my greatest concern.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Fortney and then Ms. Miller.
Yeah, it seems to me, my recollection is it used to be a fifty thousand dollar limit for the contracts. Okay, can somebody give me the history of that?
I think these are two different subjects.
Okay.
So I made a request based on visiting other school districts and community concern, based on other school districts, on what comes before the board that does not have to have a consent of the board. Because right now, the threshold is two hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
Other school districts are still at ten thousand. I mean, large districts are fifty thousand for some projects or for some certain categories. And it was explained to me, it's because we only meet once a month and that's another issue I've taken as a board member because every other district our size has two board meetings a month. I'm not opposed to meeting more often. We had an issue with idea that had to be done, IDA that had to be done quickly. There's been some finance issues we've had to rush through or get to deadline because we only have a board meeting once a month. So that itself is two different issues. I think that we should look at the amount that we are responsible for in the public's eyes, that we are not, we don't have to have consent on or there's no board vote. It's a very large difference in other districts. I wasn't here when that happened, but I understand it was because of limited meetings. So that was one issue. And then consent agenda items were, Mr. Wilson, a completely separate issue, which I also, I agree with, that the public wants to know why these things are on consent, especially high dollar. So I think we have two complete separate issues.
Right. There are two.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
There are two on here, seven and eight.
Right.
So we're on seven, right?
We're on seven.
Okay.
If I might, the original purpose for having a consent agenda was to put things where it was contemplated that there might not be any questions or discussion. And they were put there as a matter of convenience. And if a board member wished to take, to pull an item for a separate vote, it simply came off the consent agenda and went on to the regular agenda. As we got into the e-agenda mechanism, the electronic agenda that we used, that, I think that changed over time. But the purpose of a consent agenda is to have items that are unlikely to require comment. There is absolutely nothing to prevent you from saying as a matter of definition, if a matter is over this amount, we want it to be placed on the regular agenda, whether or not there's a question or a comment. But that was the purpose of the consent agenda. It was not tied to the value of the contract. It was tied to whether it was likely to draw a question or a comment.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, Dr. Allen.
Thank you, sir. I think in this, you know, I'm just looking at that, we've got about thirty-four items currently within this consent. There's about thirteen and a half million dollars collectively within these thirty-four items. I think for me, and it just goes back to Superintendent Hyde's vision in some of these things that were discussed during, you know, that process, to me, I'm wanting to hear more purposeful discussion on those particular items as well as it relates to what our strategic plan is. So I think this is great conversation in regards to the, you know, dollar amount specifically. But I would like to, you know, hear a little bit more of what that expense item is serving in regards to purpose. Now, I do think that's on us as board members. That's our responsibility to pull that and then question on that and how that's going to serve the overarching purpose within the classroom and serving our students. That's definitely on us. I did just look through the metadata on our board docs and looking at other school districts around the United States and I'm not seeing anything that actually has a dollar amount cap on consent items. So I do think there's a limitation on our system, the board docs specifically. I would love to have, you know, these items that are in consent broken down by division because, you know, we just have this collective amount of items within the consent that I'm not sure which division they're attached to. And I mean, you can collectively see some of them and where they're at, but, and that would just be some general comments on this one.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham?
Yeah, and through the years, when I first got on, I mean, I know I asked a lot of questions regarding how does something make consent versus regular? And once again, it wasn't to do with the dollar amount or whatever, but a lot of the high dollar amount items that come year after year to us are ones that we approve annually because they have to do with beginning the new school districts, whether it's purchasing textbooks, things like that. So that's kind of how I understood it and never really had an issue with the dollar amount. My concern was what was the superintendent, number eight, more so than number seven? So I'm agreeable to do whatever, but I think in the case of the higher dollar amounts, particularly like some of the items we have today that are going to be utilized because we're opening schools or whatever, I just don't think each one of those needs to be a regular agended item simply because it's got X amount of dollars to it. To me, it's what is the substance of the item, not so much a dollar amount or so forth. But I know staff needs direction, so here we are. Thank you.
Ms. Fortney, you had your hand up. Okay, Mr. Wilson?
So it is clear that a board member can pull an item, but I think that creates an awful lot of work for staff. So I think it'd be better if we provide direction upfront and not, I mean, occasionally we pull an item from the, from the agenda, from the consent agenda, right? But that creates some work for staff. I'm not sure that we want to do that a lot. And I think that from my perspective, going, you know, to Ms. Cunningham's point, maybe we don't have to. Maybe instead, if it's a large dollar item, we can simply have someone offer some, a few comments about it if it's on the consent agenda. And I'm okay with that as well. I just have some concerns about things being high dollar, high dollar items on the consent agenda that we don't even discuss, right? And you have the public watching saying, wow, they're spending a million and a half dollars on this item and those are our tax dollars and we don't even know what it pertains to. So maybe if we just could have on those, there are four items here that are over a million dollars. And I would like to see somebody just come forward and offer a few comments about it. And it may not, it just may be, this is a new school building that we're constructing and it's well within the normal range of what we would pay for a new building, which is fine. I think that covers it from my perspective.
May I follow up with a question? Are you looking for that like now when we do our work session, when we do our school board review in the work session? Or are you looking maybe for that during the board meeting?
Well, I think under some circumstances, it probably should be during the board meeting, I think.
During the board.
Yeah, I think so because then you have the greatest audience and you're, it just appears that we're more transparent, I think.
Yes, Ms. Fields and then Superintendent Hyde.
Okay, so we have in the past had items on the agenda that a board member might have wanted someone to come down front and to give a description. So that is not anything that we have not done in the past. So I think that we can do that. And I think that as it relates to the format of the agenda, when we had e-agenda, I believe we did have them, the items listed by division, I believe. And I don't know if it's possible for this to occur as well. So I think that both of those situations can be resolved easily.
Okay, thank you.
Part of this too serves to the point about transparency with our expenditures and our, how it aligns to our mission objectives and our strategic plan. That will be further clarified in the next few months, as you know, and starting in July, I'll start bringing presentations forward about developing our next three to five year strategic plan and how we're aligning our resources and putting dollars behind those things that we truly value. And the committee will be part of that. There are times, to Board Member Wilson's point, where we do have to act quickly. There are two ways to look at consent items and my ability to authorize expenditures. The board authorizes a budget. So long as items that have been authorized fall within the scope of the approved amount within those budget areas, for example, capital investments or whatnot, then we do have to move a little bit more quickly because to delay a procurement by thirty days impacts staff and impacts our ability to move forward and at times be competitive in our pricing in other areas, depending on what we're actually competing for. If we're going out to bid for fuel costs, for example, there are different implications for us. So we could talk more and I think this is a good opportunity for a workshop in the future about what your expectations are, what your desires are. To Ms. Field's point, absolutely, there's no reason why staff could not come forward and provide a few words to actually explain this, even if it's something you're accustomed to. A lot of our people in our, as far from a transparency perspective, a lot of our stakeholders have no idea what that may be referring to because we have a language all to ourselves in public education. We use a lot of acronyms and jargon that's not necessarily readily applicable elsewhere. So we could absolutely do that. The likelihood is we'll have to do it in both sessions. You're going to want that on the front end in the workshop and then the public's going to hear it again in the open session. So staff will just be ready to present in both, in both areas.
Mr. Wilson?
And to clarify, we, there was some discussion about having strict limits and say, for example, if it's over half a million dollars, it's on the regular agenda, not on the consent agenda. And as I've been thinking about that, that's probably not necessary. I, to Ms. Field's point, we can simply have someone talk about it. When the, when the motion is made and there's a second for the consent agenda, at that point in time, we can have someone just come and talk about those issues. So there are four today that I think require some discussion, however minimal that is. Numbers two, eleven, twenty-four and forty.
Do you want to pull them today?
No, no, I don't want to pull them.
Sure.
I just want someone to come down as when we make the motion for the consent agenda and just offer a few words about those four items because they're all over a million dollars.
For this evening?
Yes, for this evening, please.[1751.54] You know, I think one's $35 million, one's $3 million.
Can you read, can you read the numbers for me?
Number two?
Yes.
11, 24, and 40. Those are all over a million dollars. And so, if we could just have somebody come down and say, hey, look, and just offer a few comments about why that item's on the agenda, what it does. It may be routine, but at least it tells the general public that we're paying attention to the budget.
And if I may add something?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Fields?
Once incoming Superintendent Hyde gets familiar with everything, no one from the audience might have to come. He might be able to answer those questions himself.
Yeah, that's my point.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
That's my point, too, sure.
And in the past, we've always done what you're doing, is talk to the superintendent in advance so that he or she is not caught off guard, and they have the staff in place to answer whatever the concerns are.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think these will be easy items to address.
Okay. Ms. Fields, any other questions or discussion? All right. So, was there consensus then or direction on that?
Well, we, we need to do that.
Right.
If we don't do that, I'm going to pull from the consent agenda. So, let's do that, right?
Right. So, the consensus is that during our work session, any items that we might have a question about, we would bring up. It could be $750,000, it could be a million, whatever you decide as a board. And if those are questioned, then those would be things we would ask that someone would speak about during the board meeting later that evening. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
And if Superintendent Hyde wants to address it, I'm perfectly fine with that.
Sure, either way.
All right. Okay, thank you. Ms. Miller?
This is still on seven before we go to eight. I just want to make sure that it won't have to be the board member doing that every session. It's going to be practice that if a consent item is over, we're trying to avoid having to pull each time. So, are we going to need to bring that up each time, or is this going to be something that's going to be done consistently? That's my question. Mr. Wilson originally said that's where the whole figure came in because it could be practice to have an explanation. If not, we're going back to doing what we've always done and asking for information on items.
So, you're back to?
It's the question. I don't know what Superintendent Hyde recommends.
Typically, it's done based off a dollar threshold, but for the sake of transparency, there's always supplemental documentation that goes along with this to provide further justification. So, we can approach it two different ways. We can approach it initially where we share out, and then over time, we can establish a pattern. I have no objection, neither would staff. Either myself, Mr. Hill, or a member of the executive team would be here prepared to speak to that, or we can have each individual person speak to their topics, but again, briefly, because it is on consent.
All right. Ms. Reynolds, thank you. Ms. Miller?
I guess my comments are just going to be, I think there's a lot of, if we set a dollar amount, we know that we're doing a Garner renovation, for example, is the first thing on the consent agenda. Do we need somebody to explain some of these things, even if they would be over the half million dollar threshold? How many of those things need to be explained? My preference would be to identify in the work session, regardless of dollar amount, these are the things that we would like to be explained to the board.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what we've always done.
Yes.
So, for this evening, we have direction. I would suggest this be part of our retreat workshop so that we can review this and establish an expectation moving forward, if we may.
Okay.
Thank you. Perfect.
Thank you. And item eight, we're going to talk about the dollar amount, or excuse me, the superintendent's authorized signature amount for contracts. Ms. Fields?
Okay, if I remember correctly, during the time that we established this amount, we were having a lot of hurricanes, a whole bunch of them. And we were not meeting, we were having meetings, but the hurricanes came very rapidly. And so, to allow the superintendent authority to make sure that the school district was still operating effectively in the way that it should, we came up with this amount. Now, I don't know if it needs to be revisited because we're not having as many hurricanes as we've had in the past. I'm okay with what it is currently, but I know that some of you all are not. But I just want to make sure that it's understood it wasn't because we weren't having enough meetings, it was because we were having a lot of hurricanes. And we wanted to make sure that we were prepared in case we needed to have some immediate decisions made, and the superintendent would have authority to keep our district going at that time.
Ms. Miller?
I have two questions. One for Wes, if there's an emergency action that can be taken at the time for those kinds of emergencies to keep the district going?
Well, you have in this policy, your policy on this is 6320. And you have a, the initial paragraph, which authorizes the superintendent to make, to enter and execute contracts in an amount no greater than $250,000 routinely. And then you have a separate provision for emergency purchases that says, notwithstanding the general limit on the superintendent's authority, turn it into contracts in an amount no greater than $250,000, superintendent is authorized to approve and execute contracts on behalf of the board involving expenditure of public funds in an amount greater than $250,000 when the superintendent determines in writing that an immediate danger to the public health, safety, or welfare, or other substantial loss to the district requires emergency action. So, you have it both ways. You have a standard authority up to $250,000, and you have emergency authority that goes above that.
And Mrs. Dodge, we talked about this. This came up because of community concern about some things that went through that we had no vote on, which was fine. It happened to be one of the reviews that we did that wasn't bid out. There was several, there was a lot of question about how, so that's how it became, brought to my attention. So, I started looking at other districts. And I know you had some information, or you were going to collect some information. So, can you tell me what other similar districts' policy is on this?
Yes, ma'am. I looked at the 10 largest districts in Florida. Palm Beach has the same limits that we have, except for the fact that they have a, 250 is commodities and contractual services, and then they have a $25,000 limit for professional services, but they use the same $250,000 limit that we have generally. Most of the other districts had a $50,000 threshold, except for Duval, which has a $75,000 threshold. Clay has $100,000, and there were some other smaller districts that had varying smaller and larger thresholds. What you had mentioned to me was Hillsborough, which I spoke to them this morning because I was unable to find on their website any changes. And what they have is a $50,000 threshold, but they have a lower threshold for technology services. And so, what they were trying to do was bring that technology services threshold up to the general $50,000 threshold. And that was the change that they were proposing. But then, in discussing with Hillsborough, they also were kind enough to provide me with a document because they had done some research on the subject as well with school districts outside of Florida. I mean, they've done a great deal of research on this. But generally, within the Florida large districts, it's a $50,000 threshold, but there are three exceptions, us being one of them.
Could I make the request that this also be added to the retreat for discussion? This doesn't have to be made today, but I want us to work on coming to align with what other districts our size have, and mainly because of the transparency piece.
That's duly noted. Thank you. Ms. Fortney?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to ask because I have been bombarded with, what do you mean, you didn't know? Well, I did know, but I didn't know that it was going to be a problem because of the cost, et cetera. Because if you have two or four $250,000 mess-ups, you're out a million dollars. And I would feel very guilty, you know, that I was not able to pinpoint that beforehand. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Yes, Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you. Just her point of clarification, too. I think most of the comments that I get aren't ever on recurring. We spend a $50,000 here, or $100,000 here. It's the new things that were introduced and never brought to the board until after the fact that we get a lot of questions about. So, if at the very least, the new things that are coming forward, we have a lower threshold for, personally, I don't, if we've approved it once and it seems to be doing well and meeting our needs, I don't necessarily think we need to see it every year if it's something that we've done, we do every year. But when it's, we're first buying in or purchasing it, I think the limit should definitely be lower.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Cunningham?
And I would have to agree with that 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or discussion? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Dodge and Ms. Jenkins. Madam Chair, we have finished our items for today, and keep in mind, we've pushed for time.
And can we direct our board? What do you have next, our executive session?
We do have, if you were going to the information items and the new business and consider the board comments, if you want to...
Go forward with that.
If you, yeah, if you want to address that, and then we will finish and then move to that. Yes?
Are there any questions then on information items? Yes, go ahead.
So, we're, I apologize. We want to go ahead and move for discipline is what we're going to need to do.
You want to move to discipline?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Real quick, let me do...
Yes, ma'am.
The half-cent sales tax oversight committee. Does anybody have any questions about Karen Tyner? She's been a longtime advocate in Haynes City, and I think she's going to serve beautifully as our new rep from our area.
Just, it's Haynes City, so I'm assuming that is your appointment.
It is my appointment. Yes, ma'am. I know that wasn't on there.
Yeah, if in the future, we could have who, what district it is, that would be really, really helpful.
That would be helpful.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, okay. So, okay, if there's no questions, we'll move forward there, and then you wanted to go ahead and go to discipline?
No, ma'am, let me clarify. I apologize. At the end of work session, so we will move to discipline.
Okay. So, in the essence of time, we've taken care of the sales tax oversight committee and then normally our agenda review. Instead of going through piece by piece, because in the essence of time, let me just open it up and see if anyone has questions on any of the minutes, section D, E, and F on the agenda, approval of minutes, approval of new administrators, and then we'll go through the consent agenda in case there's questions. Yes, Mr. Wilson?
No questions, just a point of clarification. I gave four items, and we're going to have somebody just speak briefly about those four this evening?
More likely, it may just be a summary provided by myself for Mr. Hill.
That's fine, thank you.
Because staff are here, and I can get a summary. I already know two of them.
Okay.
I just can't address the capital projects, but I can get the update that we need.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Okay, so, moving to the consent agenda, item G, are there any questions, one through 20? Consent agenda, one through 20. Consent agenda, 21 through 40. 21 through 40. Any questions on area H action agenda, one through five? Yes, sir?
On the consent?
Yes, sir.
I did have a question on item 37.
Okay. Go ahead.
And I don't think there's anybody here to clarify on that. I was just curious if we're purchasing just a repository, or there's more, is that more connected to services within that piece of software? And then, I was just curious if we're able to track, you know, the return on investment from that repository after a year of service?
That's the...
Okay, perfect.
Here comes.
She's coming.
Come on down.
Welcome.
We're happy to see you.
37.
37.
37.
It's Safari Montage, correct?
Yes, Safari Montage.
So, that's our online virtual platform that we use to replace all videos, DVDs, things like that, where teachers can go in. It's searchable by standard, by benchmark, so that they can align those things and use snippets versus having to show an entire two-hour movie that may not be directly applicable to what's being taught. That, in conjunction with others, is largely utilized by countless school districts. Again, from a storage perspective, just think about that, how difficult it is to store and maintain VCSH tapes. Yes, those are still probably lingering in many of our facilities, DVDs and whatnot. The online platform became much more cost-effective for school districts. It's easier to maintain as well. It's a digital copy, and it can't be lost or damaged. It stays there in perpetuity. And in many instances, teachers can actually contribute lesson plans and other content that their colleagues can then utilize. So, that was the brief narrative I could provide, but go ahead.
Yeah, it's also our media streaming. Our television channels are streamed within Safari Montage. So, we switched the way that we stream. It's all, it's content, but it's also our video streaming for certain channels that we broadcast.
Okay, great. So, a little bit of hardware and software.
Yes, it's both.
Yeah. So, I was just curious, are we measuring, you know, like return on investment? So, like how many repositories are we utilizing, you know, per year? I mean, if this is a high-use tool, I should make sure that, you know, we're definitely utilizing it.
So, it actually serves dual purposes. It is content that is streaming, but it's also a, what they call our video, where we create videos and store them as well. So, it's content provided, and it's content that we produce that we also stream and provide. So, it's a storage, it does both. It stores, it's our video storage content for what we develop as well as content that's provided.
Great. Thank you.
Do you want me to answer number 40 while I'm here?
SIPA and COPA, go ahead. I mean, it's Online Protection Act information.
Number 40?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. It's, and it's a three-year contract. So, it shows the full amount, but it's actually $366,000 plus per year. But it's, when you do multi-year contracts, obviously, you get better price.
Perfect. Thank you.
And to be specific, it covers SIPA and COPA.
Yep.
The Child Internet Protection Act and the Child Online Protection Act, if I got those correct.
Yep.
So, both of those are now statutory requirements that stemmed from federal legislation and passed through state legislation for us to ensure that when we are using second and third-party providers, for example, our STAR testing or other types of online platforms, that the information that those companies are collecting is not used for direct advertising, that they're protecting, much like we do, we no longer use social security numbers for student ID numbers. We use a non-identifiable student ID number that's not directly linked back to that individual. The same thing is true of these online providers. And we have an obligation through SIPA and COPA to provide our families with an update, if I misspeak, please jump in, an update as to what companies collect, what information, and how their children may be exposed. And as a result, we've actually seen a great deal of improvement in many of these contracts applications because they weren't necessarily always protecting student information. And I won't name names, but many of those companies have elevated their internet protection and, more importantly, individual information privacy as a direct result of this. So, this is a partnership that we use to help ensure that we are being compliant with both of those requirements. How'd I do?
You did it well.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Was that sufficient, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, that's fine, thank you. But I'd like for us to do that at the board meeting, so...
Absolutely.
Because we have a bigger audience, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on to our agenda items, action agenda, items one through five, any Next, our public hearing, any questions? Then we'll have our superintendent's report, legal report, and auditor's report. Any questions regarding those? Okay, we've completed our agenda review. And now I turn it over to Mr. Hill.
You need a break?
Well, we got to go ahead and announce what's next and when you want us to start.
Yes, ma'am. In five minutes, we're going to, in five minutes, we're going to do our discipline session here.
Okay, here.
And then, as soon as that's over, we're going to go across the hallway there...
Yes, sir.
For the executive session.
And then we'll need to clear the room.
So, we're going to need to clear the room.
And kill the mics.
Clear the room and kill the mics. All right.
I just want to make one quick request. So, we had talked originally about having Steve Warner come and present this summer about the community liaison position. I believe Superintendent Byrd was planning for the July 27th work session. I've been contacted by several community members in Winter Haven that would like to be here to stand in support for him. So, is it all possible to have it first on the agenda where I can give them a time certain of when he's presenting? That way, they can attend if they so choose. I just wanted to make sure that's on our agenda for next month. I just wanted to make sure that's on our agenda for next month.
Duly noted.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so, we're officially adjourned.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham.